I'd like to repeat the regular meeting of the City Council Public Financing Authority. City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Councilman Twining.
President.
Councilman Kennedy.
Here.
Mayor Protem McKeon.
Here.
Mayor Burns.
Here.
Councilwoman Vandermark.
Here.
Councilman Strickland.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by City Attorney Mike Vigliotta.
Please put your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh.
What? Where? Yeah, I know. Invocation, please.
Please join the faithful and generous citizens of the city council. Most gracious heavenly Father, you are exalted in your word to trust in the Lord with all your heart, to lean down on our own understanding and all our ways to acknowledge you and that you will direct our paths. That's great counsel for all of us, and we especially ask that you would direct the paths of each of our city council members this evening as they deal with the issues on the agenda. May you impart your wisdom and discernment to each member of our council and for all of those who will be participating this evening. We pray that you would guide them and enable them to make the best decisions possible for our city. We ask your blessing, Lord, on each of our council members, our city manager, all of our department heads, all of our faithful and committed city employees who work so diligently in support of our city. We also pray for all of our Huntington Beach first responders. May you keep them safe and give them your wisdom and protection on every call. And, Lord, we want to pause for a moment to remember and to recognize our faithful brother Nick Vella as this is the third anniversary of his death, as his helicopter went down serving the community that he loved. We ask you to bless and to bring continual comfort to his family, friends, and coworkers. And we want to never forget all that he gave to us and the legacy he left to us. Lord, bless our meeting this evening, and may your peace and wisdom guide all that occurs tonight. And we ask this in your precious name, Jesus. Amen.
I'm sorry. I'm not the combination.
This is gonna be an interesting meeting. Be ready.
Oh, yeah. City Attorney, do you have any close, anything to report from the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Anybody want to make a city council member?
I do.
Yes, Tony.
I just want to point out that our esteemed city attorney, Michael Gates, has moved on to be deputy, Deputy Attorney General of the United States. He's done such a remarkable job for our city. He's been known and tapped by the national government to clean up the Department of Justice. And I can think of no one better to go to Washington to clean house and do what's right for the American people. And I'm proud of Michael Gates. Thank you.
I just want to say yesterday was our 115th birthday as a city. That's cool. All right, City Clerk, do you have any supplemental communications?
Yes, we have received supplemental communications. Consent calendar number 14, email communication received regarding proposed appointment of Mel Williams to the Harbor Commission. Number 15, memorandum received from Public Works Director Chow Wu updating language in the staff report. Administrative items, number 20, 199 email communications received regarding the proposed approval of Huntington Beach Public Library 50th Anniversary Plaque. Number 22, 36 email communications received regarding the consideration of how to proceed with the proposed initiative to repeal ordinance 4318 pertaining to the Community Parent Guardian Review Board and memorandum received from the Deputy City Manager Jennifer Carey regarding the financial impact report. Number 23, 35 email communications received regarding the consideration of how to proceed with the proposed initiative to amend the Huntington Beach Municipal Code pertaining to the public operations of the library services. Memorandum received from Deputy City Manager Jennifer Carey regarding the financial impact report. Number 24, 175 email communications received regarding the proposed approval of a license agreement with the Flowers of the Sky Entertainment LLC for Symphony of Flowers at Huntington Beach Central Park East and a memorandum received from Deputy City Manager Jennifer Carey.
Thank you. City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have 50 speakers.
Okay. Then I shall make the announcement, and I'm going to start it off with just letting people know that I've already instructed the police that if there's outbursts and unruly outbursts out of order, out of decorum, it's gonna be, there's not gonna be much tolerance, okay? We're gonna be civil in this place. We got a lot of speakers tonight. We got a lot of things going on, and we don't need a bunch of side comments and stuff. So please be respectful to other speakers as they'll be respectful to you. So proper decorum at city council meetings is imperative in order to, for the public to remain informed about issues pertaining to the city's business. The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to be heard and address those issues in a public forum. Disruptive behavior impeding or delaying our ability to conduct the council's business will not be tolerated. California Penal Code Section 403 prohibits disrupting this meeting, and enforcement action will be taken for violations of this law. You've been duly warned. I'm just asking you to please behave. At this time, the city council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment on items may do so in person by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged, but not required, to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to, up to three minutes, but we're gonna give everybody one minute tonight. We have a lot of speakers. Unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time for the allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the city council's administrative assistant at 714-536-5553 or emailing the entire city council at city.council@surfcity-hb.org. And if you want to maybe contact one individually after you speak or before you leave, fill out a blue card and give it to one of the police officers. City Clerk, can you please first call the first 10 speakers?
Barbara Richardson, Mr. Amory Hanson, Andrew Einhorn, Charlie Jackson, Paula Schaefer, Pat Goodman, Mark Noran, Patty Pappas, Dom McGee, Regina Blankenhorn.
You may begin, ma'am.
Barbara Richardson, on Agenda Item 25-1002, I strongly oppose the installation of the MAGA library plaque on Central Library. The Central Library is nonpartisan. The proposed plaque is divisive and goes against the library's policy of having no religious or political signage. On Items 25-087 and 25-126, the most financially responsible action to take is to accept both library petitions as written. This would save the city money from election costs and lawsuits. On Item 25-017, I strongly oppose having the Symphony of Flowers held in Central Park. Please find another venue for this laser light show. Leave our park and wildlife alone. No on the library plaque, no on Symphony of Flowers in Central Park, yes on accepting the library petitions as written. Thank you.
Andy Einhorn, the library plaque with MAGA reference is a blatant political stunt and is disgraceful and completely inappropriate for our library's 50th anniversary. Huntington Beach deserves better leadership and not culture wars. The absurd Central Light Show is reckless, disruptive to wildlife, and not necessary. You'd rather build barriers on public parks for this show and exploit residents with a $35 ticket and a $15 parking fee for a 15 to 30-minute show. Your revenue projections are a sham. Your previous attack on library petitioners is irresponsible, and the airshow deal is an overt misuse of public funds. Finally, you have an obsession for taxpayer-funded litigation all the while pretending to be the smartest people in the room. Spoiler alert, you're not.
Sorry for the delay, ma'am. Go ahead.
Paula Schaefer, Huntington Beach resident, my comments will be brief regarding the library plaque. Your proposed plaque does not commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Central Library building as much as it memorializes your allegiance to a political ideology. Follow the example of your predecessors and design an appropriate plaque. Regarding the ballot measures, adopt the ordinances that were proposed in which each received over 16,000 registered voter signatures. In adopting these petitions this evening, you will be saving the city a lot of money. I'd like to point out that any attempt to blame the expenditure of funds on the proponents of these petitions ignores the majority city council members who had more than one opportunity to approve the ordinances already. They choose not to, and as a result, funds must be spent to acknowledge that the many volunteers were successful in their efforts to obtain the necessary signatures. Do the right thing, approve the proposed ordinances tonight. Regarding the Symphony of Flowers event, as proposed, I believe that moving forward on this
Thank you, ma'am.
Drop it. Nobody wants it.
Good evening. I'm Mark Noran. I think we can all agree libraries are meant to be educational, inclusive, and welcoming, not divisive, definitely not political. If this plaque is approved in its current form, I strongly believe it will be a source of continuing angst for a great many of our wonderful residents. I believe anybody who goes into public service tries to make things better. I'm just trying to understand how this plaque makes things better. Isn't there a more appropriate acronym? Something more library appropriate, more learning appropriate? In fact, why not learn? Life educates always, renew nobly. I would invite you to consider that word noble. Review and please reconsider. If you truly believe this is the only choice, then vote to approve. If, on the other hand, you have even minor doubts, then you must vote for redesign. Mr. Burns, New Year's Day, Surf City Splash. A neighbor of yours and I were down there playing our ukuleles at Zach's by the pier, and you said something that stuck with me. Enjoy today, but plan for tomorrow. True words, well spoke. Dang it.
Please begin.
Dom McGee, 24-year resident of Huntington Beach. I want to speak in support of the new plaque for the HB Central Library. It's 50th anniversary. For years now, we've been subject to sexual proclivity flags and for deviant sexual ideologies being indoctrinating our kids. And now we have a semblance of sanity, and sanity is prevailing, so I want to thank the city council for that. I also want to speak in support of the Symphony of Flowers. The proposal is, will decrease the deficit and bring much-needed business and exposure to our city. There's absolutely no reason why we shouldn't use the city's assets to generate much-needed revenue in lieu of raising taxes. So I just want to thank you for that. Also, I want you to, I want to support it, and I want you to vote in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Hi, I'm a 23-year resident of Huntington Beach. The Symphony of Flowers might be a nice show. It might dam, might not damage the park. It might not scare away the American bald eagles, but it will not generate the income that we need to fight the Huntington Beach budget deficits. The city has promised at least $160,000. That's $0.16 million compared to the $5 million that was given away. At most, it is projected to give the city only between $0.43 million or $0.86 million. Even if every show were full every day, it would only be $1.9 billion compared to the giveaway of more than $5 million a year to the airshow. This is based on numbers in the reports. So again, the Symphony of Flowers might be a nice show, but it will not generate enough money to fight the Huntington Beach deficits. And then in closing, do we really want alcohol in the park for 50% of the days in winter? Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Regina Blankenhorn. Good evening. Many people are speaking tonight, and mainly about the Symphony of Lights project, the petitions that were signed and certified, and the ludicrous plaque for the 50th anniversary. You were elected to do the will of the people, and I hear that all the time, actually, from you. At the commission last week, there were over 300 emails sent, and there were a majority of speakers, and all of them were, the majority were talking about the plaque, that how inappropriate it was. You're not listening. You say you do the will of the people, and you're just not listening. I mean, you have nonpartisan positions, and there should be no reference, no politicizing on these, on this plaque. If, if it was, you know, what, it would be someone coming out saying, if we had Dems written there, you know, "Dynamic educators maintaining sanity." Our parks are our respite from the rat race.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight to thank the city attorney for his service. The city attorney had particularly been effective in the fight against high-density development. It now falls upon the council, Mr. Vigliotta, and we, the people, to continue this crusade. I am hopeful that I may get another chance to see the city attorney. Tonight, I announce that if such a hearing occurs, I will personally travel to Washington to see Huntington Beach's lawsuit against 13,000 units argued at the Supreme Court. Let's continue to fight in the hills of orange, in the valleys of Los Angeles, and in the bridges of San Francisco. On the issue of high-density development, when the state and the press and the whole world tell us to move, the council's job is to plant itself like a tree beside the River of Truth and tell the whole world, "No, please move." Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Patricia Pappas, 45-year resident, honorable mayor, council, and staff. I am in, I'm here in support of the 50-year celebration plaque and the Symphony of Flowers temporary installment in the park. In 2025, the plaque will be a beautiful reminder of all that is and will be, and the library as such. This is a special time in our history where Americans have stood together to say, "Let's make America great once again." The library, for years, has been a safe and awe-inspiring place for children. And, did I lose some time there? Oh, okay. Are we okay?
Yep.
The library does have some problems, but we will continue to work to rectify these. The reason why I got involved in this whole process was because of the JPA. We are losing $600,000 per year.
Thank you, ma'am.
Because of the JPA.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Next speaker.
Mayor Burns and city council members. Here tonight to request that you vote no on Agenda Item 24, the license agreement between the city and the Sky Entertainment LLC for the management and operation of the Symphony of Flowers. There remain several unanswered questions about the action, which leads me to believe that this activity requires a vote of the people per City Code 1612, Measure C, from 1990, if, it's been updated a little bit over the years. Does the square footage of this activity and cost exceed the limits of Measure C? In the spirit of full disclosure, please tell us what other sites were considered for this activity, why they are not listed, why they were rejected from the consideration, and who from the community participated in this decision-making? It would be really helpful for us to know that information. Thank you.
Thank you. If that's the first 10, please call the second 10, please.
Mina Lunara, Ursen Russell, Sue Welfringer, Stacy Grovesner, TJ England, Brian Thienis, Chris Cluey, Kelly Logomarcino, Lori Shepler, and James Elder.
All right, hold on. Speaker, please start.
Hi, council, mayor. Thanks for your time tonight. My name's Ursen Russell. I'm stepping back. I'm a little confused because I thought this was a city council meeting. It kind of seems like a therapy session for like a labor union or something with all the chatter and the applause going on. I don't know what's happening. People seem to have lost their way. Make America great again? That's something contentious, but that's not actually what I wanted to talk about. I didn't even know this whole thing was going on tonight. I want to thank you all for fighting for everyone, for elections, and setting an example in this county. You guys are really helping to pave the way for what the rest of the citizens and the city councils need to do in this county, to show our county and our state government why elections should be handled locally, with local control instead of centralized control. The ballot measure you guys proposed last election in the primary, passed by a far majority, showing that the citizens here have common sense and want to actually have local control of their elections. ID in our elections, that's not a contentious subject, except for it seems like some people. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Burns, Mayor Protem McKeon, my name is, and other council members, my name is Brian Thienis. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Huntington Beach, and I'm here in favor of Item 20, the 50th Anniversary Plaque for the library. I think it represents a monumental moment for the city, for the library, for the city, and for the country. And I think it's, it's a good idea to put it on a plaque. It's, it's an important time for us, and I thank all of you for stepping up and doing the hard work that you've been doing to try to change things here. I'm noticing a big difference. I'm seeing a lot of changes. I know a lot of people don't like what they're hearing about this plaque, but it's a plaque. It can be taken down. It's not a five-story monument, not a five-story giant building that the prior three council members wanted to vote for in one meeting that would change the landscape of the city forever. You could never undo that. And they just said, "Oh, approved." Boom.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Mina Lamara, and I'd like to start by saying, when I moved to Huntington Beach, one of the first things that I noticed, well, I'd like to say vibe, and my mom makes fun of me for saying vibe, so the thing I noticed about Huntington was the energy of Huntington. It was so alive and so infectious, and it made me feel like it was such a community feeling, even though Huntington's such a big city, I felt so included. And something that really exemplifies that is our library. It's big and it's beautiful, and it offers so many different opportunities to all the different citizens of Huntington. And making a political plaque the centerfold of the anniversary of such an amazing place is not appropriate for what the library stands for. As a citizen of Huntington Beach proudly, as of three years now, which isn't very long, but still, it has given me enough time to understand the amazingness of Huntington. I say that this plaque is a $7,000 symbol of hypocrisy because with all due respect, city council members, you're the ones who tried to privatize our library, and now you're trying to put your names on a plaque that celebrates its 50-year anniversary. As a person with a disability, as a woman, but most importantly, as a city, as a citizen of Huntington Beach, I am not in favor of this plaque. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Please.
Hello, I wanted to first start by giving a welcome to Mike Vigliotta. It'd be nice to have him back in Huntington Beach. Stepped away for a second. My name is Sue Welfringer. I am here to object to proposed designs for the library plaque. First, the word alluring, it sounds like the library is draped in a negligee. That's a sexually-charged word. A political campaign message does not belong on a commemorative plaque. Please remember, you represent every citizen in Huntington Beach. It is your duty and responsibility to bring our community together and not divide us with words that, for many, feels like a middle finger salute. Next, please adopt the petitions as written. We do not need a politically-appointed committee to decide what books belong in our library. What we do need is to know that our library will always be operated by the city, not an outside entity. And finally, until our park volunteers are convinced that the light show won't have negative effects, I can't support that event at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, TJ England, 55-year resident. I really question your environmental report about the effects of this Symphony of Lights. I really question your environmental report about the effects of this symphony of light. It seems meaningless. Is it an independent environmental status statement? I would really like to see your report. I can't believe that this isn't going to damage our park, our six acres. You're putting in tarps, you're putting in 100,000 flower lights, you're putting in 500,000 LEDs into the ground, you're putting walking paths. You're going to have this for eight months at a stretch. How is this not going to damage our park, our, its environment, and our wildlife? And you're going to do this for three years, is what I understand? You're going to sign a contract? I'd like to see this contract.
Next speaker, please. Ma'am, that's it. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Happy New Year to all you guys. My name is Dinora Chavatia.
Okay, hold on. I'm sorry to interrupt, but please don't have any more outbreaks, please. Please respect the speaker. Go ahead, ma'am. Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you. My name is Dinora Chavatia. I'm native from Cuba, brought to this country by federal, protected as the federal as refugee. If all of you guys call yourself government, do not allow me to continue sleeping in my car, because my family will pick me up from Miami so I could break news out of Miami and let the whole world know why we have been deprived of housing by people from Mexico discriminating against us, forcing me to be homeless. I don't drink, do drugs neither, smoke. I'm able to speak English now. I don't want to embarrass the city Huntington Beach, which I loved, and the city manager needs to authorize a voucher so I will not be in my car across the library temporary until co-sland property is being built. Already talked to the developer, I say port one. I'm a low income now, but I worked 40 years and paid taxes. So this cannot continue happening.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, yes, I want to talk to the city manager when everything is over. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Clue, 15-year HB resident. I'm here to speak out against both the plaque and the current city council. As a community made clear at the library commission meeting last Tuesday, everyone is in favor of a plaque to celebrate the library, but the vast, vast majority are against including a MAGA acrostic. Okay? Unfortunately, it's clear that this council does not listen, so instead, I'm going to take my time to say what MAGA has stood for these past three weeks. MAGA stands for trying to erase trans people from existence. MAGA stands for resegregation and racism. MAGA stands for censorship and book bans. MAGA stands for firing air traffic controllers while planes are crashing. MAGA stands for firing the people overseeing our nuclear arsenal. MAGA stands for firing military veterans and those serving them at the VA, including canceling research on veteran suicide. MAGA stands for cutting funds to education, including for disabled children. MAGA is profoundly corrupt, unmistakably anti-democracy, and most importantly, MAGA is explicitly a Nazi movement. You may have replaced a swastika with a red hat, but that is what it is. I will now engage in the time-honored American tradition of peaceful civil disobedience.
Get the heck. Get out. Ah, we're going to take, yeah, we're, yeah, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
You felt it was divisive. You felt it did not stand for what everyone believed in. Casey McKeon, you said that a city government funded by taxpayers should fly only flags that represent us all equally. And Pat Burns, you said that the city of Huntington Beach should avoid actions that could easily or mistakenly be perceived as divisive. So if that's how you felt about that flag, then why would you even consider putting a MAGA plaque, which is clearly so divisive and does not represent us all equally, on a public library building? How is that any different? Your responsibility is to represent the best interests of all our citizens, not just the portion who are MAGA supporters. We need you to show up as sensible leaders this evening and put a stop to the MAGA plaque. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I've been, I've been a resident of Huntington Beach for 30, over 30 years. Our library is a place that fosters learning, reading, inclusion, and the power of books. This plaque with the MAGA acronym isn't about honoring the 50 years of our library's legacy. It's a cheap stunt to push a MAGA agenda where it doesn't belong. Attaching it to a divisive movement invites controversy, hostility, and possible threats, undermining a safe, welcoming space that a library should be. Worse, it sends a false message that the library endorses the MAGA agenda, which could put staff, children, and library goers at risk. If you support MAGA, then own it. Put it on your walls in tacky plaques, but don't stain or deflect from our library's legacy with your personal agenda. The plaque should be about celebrating 50 years of knowledge and literacy and community in our library. Instead, you're making it about yourselves. Please show some grace and decency and do the right thing. Keep your MAGA politics out of our library.
Next speaker, please.
Hi there, my name is James. One thing I noticed, one thing I noticed a lot in the campaign trail from all of our city councilors, especially you, Chad, was a desire to unite the people of Huntington Beach behind a city council they could be proud of. And yet, we see here a room fully divided on a project that should never have gathered this much attention because of a city council that tries to inject national politics into city government. I don't think there has ever been a reaction of this magnitude in any city in response to a library plaque. When I voted in November, I noticed that unlike with candidates for state assembly and congress congressional seats, there was neither a D nor an R next to any of the names on the candidates for city council. And I believe that is because when you are sitting in those seats, your duty is to serve every citizen of this city, of this city, and not only the ones who align with you politically. I urge you to reject the plaque and its current design and language. As a vote, approving this plaque would be a conscious vote to instill division in our city, and I urge you to uphold your campaign promises and focus instead on projects that make a positive impact and unite the people and reputation of Huntington Beach. And lastly, the decorum of the public in these meetings is a direct response to your own behavior, so if you're unhappy with the decorum in these meetings, you should lead by example and do things that are universally popular. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Kelly Lago Marcino, 10-year resident of Orange County. My family and I chose to buy a home in Huntington Beach, right across from Central Park. I'm highly opposed to the MAGA sign as a, as a representation of the community. We spend weekly, weekly, we are at the library. We ride our bikes daily through the park. It is meant to be an inclusive learning environment, not a political front. So I, I would ask that you guys truly reconsider and make this an inclusive community. With friends from either side of, of the political track, it's just not the place to, to show politics. So I'm opposed. Thank you for having me.
Next speaker, please.
Hi there. What does MAGA mean to you? I think it's called "Make America Gilded Again." The MAGA folks are giddy with thousands of federal workers losing their jobs, including veterans, veterans who gave their lives for us. Worse yet, Musk's minions are burrowing into the IRS, burrowing into the Social Security Administration, going through our private data, social security numbers, medical records, employment records. These are not accountants. These are not auditors. These are hackers with no background checks. They have access to all your stuff in Huntington Beach and the whole damn nation. So if you want your plaque and your names on the plaque, put your names on it, put your social securities on it, put your address on it, put your medical records on it, and everything else that can be transferred to the dark web. Make America Gilded H. Thank you.
Charles, next 10, please.
Next 10 speakers. Mallory Mask, Guest P, Tim Geddis, Kathy Ryder, Michael Kane, Amy, Russ Neal, Amy Semple McPherson, David Collings, Pat Looser. Please approach the podium.
Ma'am, please begin. That's you.
Oh, me? Hi. Hi, folks. Thank you for having me tonight. I will admit, this is my very first city council meeting. I actually voted for several of you guys up here, so thank you for the work that you do. I am here to talk about the plaque and the library. I feel strongly, as a mother, a PTO member, a big person at every sports field in this town, that this should not be something that we politicize, a library, in any capacity. So I honestly have talked to a lot of people in the community like me, other parents who have school-aged children who spend a lot of time at the public library, and I could tell you that I represent a lot of people tonight who are very upset by what might happen here. If you guys want to do a MAGA thing and make it really proud to be from Huntington Beach, I think that's up to you guys, but I wouldn't use the library as a way to do it. So thank you for your service. Gracie, in particular, I've been really impressed with you. When you were mayor, you went out of your way to be everywhere, and I think you were amazing at it. So thank you for what you did. I'd like you to reconsider this tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. At the February 4 city council meeting, Mayor Pro Tem McKeen blamed the current HB budget concerns on previous councils. His words were, "They've been kicking the can down the road." However, if you look back from the year 2002 now, there's only been one year that our city councils had a Democratic majority. So for 23 years, Republicans have been kicking the can down the road. And since 2014, we've only had two Democrats serving as mayors. In December 2022, our city had a $15 million budget surplus. So what happened to that? It seems to me that these two years of the current Republican majority, that you've wiped out the surface. I guess you've just been kicking the can down the road as well. Do better.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, Michael Kane. I've been a resident here for about 15 years. Keep this kind of short. I'm here to speak in the negative for the proposed library plaque in all its current forms. Direct political support should not be represented on a plaque commemorating a building meant to service all citizens regardless, regardless of their affiliations. This isn't only opinion, but current policy that's being blatantly disregarded. I'm also looking forward to the council adopting the library petitions that were signed or putting them up for a public vote. Thanks.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Amy. I've been a resident for 20 years of Huntington Beach. I love this city. I am extremely against any political or religious plaques on the library or anywhere in the city. But, and also, I want to say, I look forward to voting on the library petitions I signed. I knew what they were. I signed them, and I would, it would be even better if you just adopt them, just accept them. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Okay, we were insulted and interrogated by the city attorney's office, but we, the people of Huntington Beach, spoke. And, please.
You're a [bleep] child and doctor, man. Motherfucker, is what you are. You [bleep] whore. You guys are all whores. You guys are all the [bleep] that like tried to [bleep] turn Trump in for nothing, right? You ought to be ashamed of yourself.
Read the petition. Read the petition. Read the petition. Read the petition.
You're a [bleep] fraud. You're a [bleep] fraud. You're a liar, and you're a fraud. [bleep] you.
Please put the ballot measures to vote this year.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and city council, Tim Geddis in the House. Abraham Lincoln, whose birthday we just celebrated, has famously attributed the statement, "You can fool some of the people all the time, and all of the people some of the time, but you cannot fool all of the people all of the time." That is certainly true of the current, of the current city council in its flouting of common sense and decency and aggressively pushing its MAGA agenda. However, another quote attributed to W.C. Fields is more telling. He said, "You can fool some of the people some of the time, and that's enough to make a decent living." To, to paraphrase, the, the current city council believes it can brazenly fool enough people, enough of the time, to run our local government the way it wants while ignoring the bulk of the community and its best interests. No one, everything that you propose, plaques, light shows. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Amy McGraw. I absolutely believe the Huntington Beach City Library should be celebrated this year for its 50th anniversary, but I think this plaque does not celebrate the library in the way it deserves. Our city is extremely well-served by its veteran services, its citizenship classes, its children's storytime, and so many other services it provides. Those services can only be provided by the librarians, the volunteers, the custodians, and the educators, who volunteer their time, who give their time up to the library to do those services for them, for us, the city. And this plaque you guys have designed mentions them not once. That, that plaque should be celebrating those people, should be celebrating five decades of people who've served the Huntington Beach City Library, who've served the Huntington Beach citizens, who've served the community, and it doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Russell Neal, and I live in Huntington Beach. Look, I'm fine with this library plaque, but I am also amused at the expressions of dismay over its political content from people for whom everything is political. As to the petitions, while pretending to be about threats of book banning and library privatization, neither of which exist, we all know the actual motive behind these two disingenuous petitions is a strange obsession with using our library to push adult sexual material on minors.
Please let him speak.
We all know. I commend this council for its defense of our children. I commend this council for its defense of our children and urge you not to cave to these petitions, but to fight them tooth and nail. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, I want to apologize to you, Don, for coming off... I want to apologize to Don for coming off short earlier. He cut the tail end of the conversation. It didn't apply. I am so happy to have this council. I'm very pleased. My name is David Collings. I've been a resident here for, I don't know, 30-some years. I've had a business here for a long time. I'm here once again just regarding men's recovery homes and recovery homes in general downtown. I have meetings set up. We're good. I want to just propose to the council that they consider possibly putting a moratorium on licensing these facilities for 12 months. I would like to have the council consider that we put a 12-month moratorium on licensing these recovery homes downtown until we have a chance for the new city council to get their arms around the state licenses, the city licenses, the unlicensed, the Airbnb license. It's kind of like closing the border for a minute. Let's just take a deep breath, get our arms around what's going on, and then make some good choices. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Go ahead.
Hello. Mayor Burns, council members, my name is Pat Slusser. I've been here forever. I'm not going to bore you and go over all the details that folks have talked about the plaque. We know it's a political statement, but I'm going to appeal to your, what your president says is, "Common sense." Does it make sense that you would put the MAGA insignia on a public plaque to be displayed in a public place? That does not make common sense. And I want to thank also the people on this side of the court, or whatever you are, the council, all of them are paying attention. But as I watched over here, we got people on their iPads, we got people on their phones, still on their phones, not listening to people here. I appreciate what you've done. I think putting that on the plaque is immature, it's childlike, and it's going nae, 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 to the public of Huntington Beach. You can do better. Grow up. Make a statement on your own, but don't make a statement in public like this. You know that it stands for diversity, anti-diversity, et cetera.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speakers, please.
Ken Inoue, Brian Vea, Heidi Vea, Wendy Rincon, B. Channel, Bethany Webb, Clark Snodgrass, Evelyn, Mike Selna.
First speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Kenny Inoue, 50-year resident of Huntington Beach. At a time when Huntington Beach is required to spend $2 billion to fix its infrastructure in order to protect the safety and the health of every resident of Huntington Beach, I continue to be disappointed by the fact that every council agenda contains items that divide this great community at a time when we should be working together. A great city such as Huntington Beach must have great leaders who bring the community together in a time of crisis. At this challenging time when people are at risk, we need you all to step up and be great leaders. We do not need people that make policy that divide the people of this city because we're better than that. And I really had more speech, but one minute. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bethany Webb, 45-year Huntington Beach resident, not a carpetbagger like Tony, not a LA cop, probably racist like Pat, not a we-know anti-Semite like Chris Selna. I would, I don't, I've seen Casey. We thought there was some place where you might actually stand up for us. You have all heard what the people want, and we know you don't want that. Chad, I'm actually going to go to you on this because Semper Fi, always faithful. There is a, some of us still believe in the Constitution that represents all of us. We believe Huntington Beach residents should be represented by all of us. I think you're the last person that might stand up for honor. Semper Fi.
Next speaker, please.
Wendy Rincon, 50-year resident. We get it, the anti-democratic MAGA won. You don't need to rub our faces in it, and that's what that plaque does. I think you're all aware of that. It's not going to be in our best interest to come together as a community, and certainly not for future generations. You guys want to put your names on it, you know what? Go for it. You've been on council for 10 minutes, you want to be there for posterity? Awesome. But the MAGA does not belong in there, and you all know it. Regarding the flower show, it's a misuse of our public lands. It will endanger our park and our wildlife. Many of you ran on saving our library, and yet all you can do is attack the library. We legally collected signatures to go on a ballot so it could go on a ballot for all of us to vote whether or not we want to have a council, whether or not we want to have a privatization. Let democracy work. Let us vote.
Next speaker, please. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, my name is Clark Snodgrass. I'm here to talk about the bird aspects of the Symphony of Flowers project and give you some of the key pieces of information. Huntington Beach is really the crown jewel park for birds. There are 900 species of birds in the U.S. 300 have been seen in this park. That's more than Bolza Chica, it's more than Upper Newport, it's more than Miles Square Park, it's more than almost any park between San Diego and Malibu. This location abuts several key birding areas. We know about Talbert Lake on the west, but there's a watery area called the Island that butts up against the south part of the project, and then Lawrence Gulch on the north part. These are key areas for bird migration. Migration is big for 40% of the birds, and the Audubon Society has helped cities across the country turn off lights during migration. I don't think we want to be the people who turn on lights during migration. There may be a good place for this park in Huntington Beach, but this particular park location is not it.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank Michael Gates. He's not here, but I'm sure he's watching for the amazing courage he showed during a really dark time in our country, when tyrants were really taking all of our freedoms away. Because of Michael Gates, our city stood as a light, as a beacon of hope, of freedom. And while many were probably embarrassed of our city, I was proud. I was proud because everywhere I went, and I told people that I was from Huntington Beach, people that knew, their eyes would light up because they knew that Huntington Beach was fighting against arguably the most corrupt state in this entire country, against the Pelosi, Newsom, Brown mafia. And I just love Michael Gates, and I'm so sorry that he's not going to be with us anymore, but I look forward to watching him fight in DC. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Brian Vea, and I'm a resident here. First of all, I also would like to thank Michael Gates. He did a great job, and I look forward to following what he does. None of us are surprised that he's up there, so I hope he's having a good time in DC. I hope he's watching tonight. I'd also like to, when I was here a couple months ago speaking, the Supreme Court had passed a decision overturning the Chevron decision. If you look that up, that tightens the belt of all government, from city, state, county, all the way up to federal. Everybody's got to tighten their belts. It's going to happen. It's coming here. So everybody's going to lose funding. We need to be more responsible. And to those that put up this MAGA plaque, thank you very much. That was for me. You guys made me smile. Whoever did that, those people that are against it, you guys need to read, okay? You guys need to go learn how to read.
Excuse me. Ma'am, can you please keep your conversations down or don't have them at all unless you go outside? You're disrupting. Thank you. Go ahead.
That lady's annoying. Yeah, so, yeah, so everybody needs to tighten their belt. Things are happening. Read. It doesn't say what it says. Ha ha.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, city council. Susan Geiser, 10-year resident of Huntington Beach. I am a mother of a three-year-old and a seven-year-old and a schoolteacher. I find this plaque to be incredibly divisive. As somebody who tries to steer away from the partisanship and a lot of the ugliness in politics nowadays, I just don't see why the library is where we feel the need to put this. I wouldn't accept this kind of behavior from students in my classroom. We keep our, it has no place in the library, so I just implore you, please, keep it out of the library, celebrate the volunteers, celebrate the incredible space, celebrate learning. Let's not use it as an opportunity to celebrate some political ideology that many people don't subscribe to in this city. Furthermore, I live, one of the things that keeps up my family in Huntington Beach is this incredible park and its wildlife. I would be so, so, so sad to see any of that damaged by this light show. It is truly one of the biggest joys that I have with my three-year-old and my seven-year-old going there, walking around, looking at the birds. So please, please don't.
Next speaker, please.
Hello. I was raised directly across the street from the Central Library, and it was where I would seek solace, whether from, you know, blackouts from the neighborhood or through just personal strife. I was informed directly from a source within the community and library service commissions that private sources are funding this plaque. The ability to memorialize the propaganda despite community outcry to a public space is demoralizing and an insult to our democracy. This plaque would be a permanent reminder that our public education and resources can and will be weaponized against youths and the youth and the general public if we do not blindly follow and support government agendas, which is now clear to be under the thumb of those with deeper pockets. Not to mention further censorship of the library is a blatant attempt in suppressing knowledge, just like a Communist Party would do. The verbiage used of sanctuary, safety, value, and free is directly being challenged with the political innuendo and will only divide us further. MAGA represents violence to many with hate crimes running rampant, the historical stain...
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Mike Selma, 52-year resident. Not here to criticize you, just to ask that you reconsider your decision on the plaque. You're all good at political calculations. That's how you got elected. On one side of the library plaque equation are 30 square inches of a political statement on a wall that most people will hurry past and not even look at. On the other side of the equation, you could have a large protest with negative media coverage, more coverage of the divisive conditions here. Perhaps that's your goal. But for many of us, this continues to make our city a less desirable place to visit and live. No one will criticize you if you postpone your plaque decision and reflect on the political consequences for your own reelection and the negative impacts on our city's image. Please remove the political statement from the plaque. It does not belong on the nonpartisan library venue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Let's get to the facts. Fact: You are lying again. Like all elections, the costs are hundreds of thousands for holding the election, but adding the library measures to the ballot only costs around $8,000. Don't be fooled, Huntington Beach. Fact: The library plaque is tacky, just like whoever designed it. Fact: The Symphony of Lights will install bleachers on 20,000 square feet of valuable parkland with seating for up to 2,062, three to four shows a day, for 20 days a month for eight months. That's 8,300 out-of-towners traipsing through our parks, drinking alcohol, spreading their trash, and parking in all the nearby neighborhoods to avoid parking fees. That's a nightmare. Fact: If you pursue this, we will organize protests to make ticket holders feel very uncomfortable. Signs that say, "You are in..."
Next speaker.
It's going to happen.
Next 10 speakers. Perry Clithrow, Mary Ann Blinder, Chris Reeney, Megan Wasson, Catherine Goddard, Lisa, Jignis Padar, Larry Selnum, Natalie Mosher, Libby, Michael Fowler, Alexander Colson, Vic Lebzig.
Next speaker, please start. Ma'am.
Okay. MAGA had absolutely nothing to do with what has made our Central Library the jewel of the city. To add this verbiage to an anniversary plaque is hypocritically absurd. By following the playbooks of the Heritage Foundation, Moms for Liberty, and Project 2025, this council has actively tried to undermine the library by vilifying librarians and controlling library content. 14 of the people listed on the plaque have the power to approve and are openly MAGA sympathizers. What contributions have you made to the library? Do the others listed, especially city staff, want to be a part of this new confederacy? I couldn't decide whether the proposed plaque is a campaign sign, an in-your-face power statement, or a resume point to seek higher office. The bronze threw me off since papers generally use for these purposes, but I think all of the above are true. The design and content are questionable and meant to further divide an already divided town.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Perry Clithrow. Thank you for listening to me today. First, I ask that you advance the ballot measures to a special election or adopt them, but I don't expect you guys to do that, and that's fine. But we, the people, we got the signatures, and we would like to decide this matter for ourselves. I'm also opposed to the Symphony of Flowers event. I understand the desire to address our budget issues. They're significant. $2 billion of infrastructure we got to pay for, but selling our park space is not going to generate the revenue that's needed to solve these problems. I've spoken on this before. Letting the free market build more homes will raise enormous tax revenues. It will save us money on lawsuits, and it's going to make life more affordable for the residents of Huntington Beach. It's a win-win-win. Do that, not this. Lastly, the plaque is very tacky. Good night. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Chris Reeney, Huntington Beach native. Despite consistent feedback from your constituents, council is still debating items 20, 22, 23, and 24. The very people who say that librarians groom children want to put alluring on the building. A plaque is fitting for celebrating 50 years of Central Library, but it should list the librarian and architects involved or even HBPL's mission. Instead, it's got a clip art eagle, the names of the council, and MAGA. Now, MAGA can mean a lot of things. It can mean "Make America Gilded Age," "Make Arians Go Away," "Many Adults Groaning Loudly," "Morons Are Governing America," and "Mature Americans Gone AWOL." For items 22 and 23, just adopt the proposals, excuse me, adopt the signatures. You'll save money on an election, and it's your fiduciary responsibility. For item 24, why is this back? Why are we tying up a meadow for a sit-down version of Disconsul Gardens? And why are we doing bad stuff to an eagle habitat when we like eagles so much we're going to put them in bronze on a building?
Next speaker, please.
Larry Slone speaking. Proposing MAGA prominently on a plaque honoring our Central Library was insulting and appears to me and others like an intentionally mean in-your-face gesture. You may as well put a middle finger on the proposal itself, as that's what I think it was meant to be. With a 7-0 majority council, you can certainly continue doing what you damn well please, while the rest of the residents can just go pound salt, much like when Mayor Burns chose to prominently display a bust of President Trump on the council days in January. Well, we're still here. We're not giving up, and soon, you know, anytime soon, and that's the way it's going, not the way it's going here. The plaque should not include letters, MAGA, in any arrangement or emphasizes them in any way. It clearly is politically-based acronym that's universally recognized throughout the country. that's universally recognized throughout the country, inviting confrontation. As such, it absolutely does not belong on a plaque to be placed on any property that is common public space or a city-owned building.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hello, council. My name is Mike Fowler. I've been here like 50 years. I just wanted to say that, you know, MAGA, that term MAGA, it means a lot of different things to different people. There's some people that mean something very negative, you know, to say the least from what I've seen here. But I just want to remind you that there are 190,000 people in Huntington Beach, and 46,000 of these votes were for you people, at least the new ones. And that's like 24% of the populace. You should really try harder to maybe represent all of these people. So I'm saying because this public plaque is gonna be in a public building in a public place, perhaps more public people should be involved in the decisions of this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next public speaker, please.
Guys, hi. My name is Alex Coliso. I'm a 50-year resident of Huntington Beach, and I'm here to voice my displeasure of this MAGA plaque. I think it's petty. I think it's cheap. I don't think it's a good idea. I think a design student at Cal State Long Beach could have thought of something better. I think, you know, when I was a kid, I was told, "You can go to Main Street, but hey, stay away from Maine and Orange. That's where the skinheads are." This is what Huntington Beach has always been thought of for 50 years. Stay away from the skinheads. Now they're on PCH in Maine holding MAGA flags, okay? I don't want this in my city. I think it's disgusting. I think you should reconsider, but I don't think you're going to, because your minds have already been made up. That is all I have to say. But I can go on. I guess I got 15 seconds, so I think... That guy right there. Hey, buddy. I think you need to comb your hair, maybe chill out a little bit, and be careful. Ice might get you, because I don't know what you are. So, anyway, let's go, okay?
Thank you.
I know your heart goes out to me.
Next speaker.
There is clearly something wrong with the cost cited in the staff report for the two library initiatives. Citing a cost between $340,000 and $400,000 to add one initiative to the municipal election that's required in November of 2026, and only $8,500 to add the second ballot initiative makes no sense. It seems the report is quoting the cost of the entire municipal election, when four city council seats, the city attorney and treasurer will be on the ballot. If it only costs $8,500 to add the second ballot measure to an existing election, it would make sense that that would be the same for the first measure as well. In 2024, it only cost the city about $10,000 to add measure U to the general election ballot. And of course, the most cost-effective action to take on both measures is to adopt them as written. You're obviously aware of how beloved the HB Library is, or you wouldn't have campaigned with misleading claims of protecting the library. Every time the library is on the agenda, you are guaranteed to hear from hundreds of residents opposing actions that threaten the longstanding traditions of the local library system. With the city facing-
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here to offer a suggestion about the beautiful plaque that's being discussed tonight. I have some additional adjectives that I feel encapsulate the spirit and community of the library, and in conjunction with your messaging, would truly capture the sentiments of library patrons: friendship, unity, compassion, kindness. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Burns and City Council members. My name is Lisa-
Hold on. Please be quiet in the crowd. Ma'am, go ahead.
My name is Lisa. I'm a 50-year resident of Huntington Beach. When I first heard the news that our city attorney, Michael Gates, was leaving, I felt sad and a bit selfish, because I didn't want to see him leave a city that he's done so much of a tremendous job representing. He has taken on a gamut of issues and has a firm record of winning on most. He, along with the hard-working city council, has put Huntington Beach on the national stage, and for that, I am extremely proud. I know of no other individual more deserving to go on to represent our country at the nation's capital. I also trust him when he says that we are in good hands with his next in line, Michael Vigliotti. So, Michael, if you're listening tonight, good luck with the next chapter in your life, and know that we couldn't be more proud. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members. My name is Jignis Paddy. I'm a lifelong resident here of Huntington Beach. I first want to start off by commending Huntington Beach PD for a quick response to what happened earlier, you know. We have people in these chambers coming here every single time, saying how threatened they feel to come in this chamber, and yet they go ahead and glee and clap when an actual threat presents itself. They wouldn't know hypocrisy if it didn't see come their face. Anyways, the plaque is a great idea. I think we need to go ahead and get the fountains running again. There's a lot of empty concrete there. Like, we should have those water going for the 50th anniversary, make it look all pretty. The light thing is indifferent. Eight months seems kind of long. I feel like we can maybe make it shorter, see if people want to come and see it, and then maybe we can extend it later and make it a longer period. And I guess I have 20 seconds. Michael Gates, if you're watching this, brother, we love you, man. You made Huntington Beach so proud, and we are so excited for what you're gonna do in Washington, DC. You represent Huntington Beach under the Trump administration, and we couldn't be more proud of what you're doing. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Goddard, and I'm here to speak about the flower show, the lights. You've heard a lot about it from a lot of people. The thing you may not understand, this undoubtedly over eight months for three years running will destroy the vegetation in the area. And for one thing that you may not be particularly aware of, because I'm not sure the EIR was asked to do anything beyond human impact, is the Chevron oil fields next door, some of the greenery out there in that area where this will be, will be destroyed, and that will reduce the effect on the environment of them cleaning the air, basically cleansing the air, the trees and so on. I don't know if that was included in the EIR, because none of us, of course, have been able to really see it. So take that into consideration, please, along with the other ideas about what money you may make, which is seriously doubtful. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Vic Lebzig, a longtime resident of Huntington Beach and a former mayor of the city of Huntington Beach long, long ago. I'm here to convey once again the opposition of the Orange County chapter of the National Audubon Society called C and Sage Audubon to the proposed light show in Central Park. C and Sage is grateful for the modest improvements in EIR in the most recent version, but still, there will unquestionably be impact on the birds in Central Park. I'd like to take just a moment and express my own personal opposition as well, based on other grounds. In my view, the area that has been selected for this location is the single most scenic, most beautiful, lovely part of Huntington Central Park. I walk there frequently from my home. I think it's a shame to lose this to the general public during so much of the year, during the daylight hours, when what we'll see is basically a fenced-in area that will look like an industrial park. I hope that you will reconsider-
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Pat Burns and the City Council members. I was listening to some of the comments earlier, and they're talking about facts. I want to let everyone know that MAGA, "Make America Great Again," is gonna be looked on, and history is gonna look kindly as far as what MAGA represented. If you look at the last three weeks, the war with Ukraine's gonna be finished, the war in Israel is gonna be finished with Hamas, the hostages have been let go, the borders are being shut down. We're at a 98% low. In fact, this is the lowest amount of illegal immigrants ever coming across the border, and that's because of a tough MAGA support that President Trump has put in place. Also, listen, when we look at what's going on with Mexico and Canada, we have 10,000 troops at the border, on the southern border. We have the Canadians spending a billion dollars to secure our borders, to stop the fentanyl and everything coming across. When you look across to Europe, the rest of the world only respects power and strength, and MAGA represents that, and that's why everyone's negotiating with the United States at this point.
Thank you very much. Please be quiet in the crowd. Respect the speakers. Next speaker, please.
Natalie Mosher, over 40-year resident and former council member. Tonight, distractions, political agendas, and special interests over residents. First, the library plaque. Partisan political propaganda that does nothing to honor the true history and purpose of the library. The good news, when cooler heads prevail, a plaque can be removed. And now Symphony of Flowers, a months-long corporate takeover of our park. Our public parks are for residents, not revenue deals. This event will limit public access to our largest park, strain park maintenance and volunteers, increase car congestion and disrupt wildlife. This is not just a bad deal for the park. It's a precedent-setting corporate takeover of public space. This is not responsible governance. This is divisive political posturing, waste, and privatization at the expense of Huntington Beach residents. Thank you.
That's some great information. If you could fill out a blue card, it'd be appreciated. Ma'am, next speaker.
Valentina Bankett, eight-year resident. I am truly excited for the bronze plaque project that will mark 50 years of our library and appreciate everything the Library Commission and City Council does for Huntington Beach. Magical, like our beautiful Huntington Beach sunsets, as our wonderful library sits on an elegant position to catch the sunsets every single evening, as families, young and old, can read and enjoy the view. Alluring, stories that are powerfully fascinating and so possibly inspiring, like our own hometown, as it takes us around the world to a place of our choosing. Galvanizing, your thoughts to pull you into the path of the book you read and all its worthy worldly stories. Adventurous, as you go from one book to the next, the adventures come together, thriving your mind to explore the universe or the cities, subjects, learning DIY, fulfilling experiences from the here and afar, right in your home or special library by the waterfall. These words completely describe our beautiful library and the books that lead you on a journey you take when you are here in our small town of Huntington Beach. And thank you very much for that. I'm totally for it. And vote for Tony Strickland for Senate, February 25th.
Next speaker.
That concludes our speakers.
That concludes our public speaker. All right. Council members, do you have any council committee appointment announcements? None? Okay, AB 1234 reporting. Does anyone have anything to report? I do. I met with the... Huh? Open negotiation. Then, no, I don't. Anybody? No. No reporting? Openness and negotiation disclosures. I did meet with the executive union the other day.
I met with the MEO as well.
Mayor, I met with MEO as well.
Mayor also met with the Management Employees Organization.
Okay. Okay, city managers, report. Update on e-bikes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Lieutenant Archer will provide the community an update on our e-bike programs within the Huntington Beach.
Good evening, council. I want to start by apologizing for my impediment here. I had surgery on Monday, so this isn't what I normally sound like, so bear with me as I try and get through this. I'm here to provide a update on the efforts city staff have been conducting- It's e-bikes. In any case, just to give an update with respect to e-bikes. So, on September 5th of 2023, Councilman McKeon brought forth an H item to discuss the feasibility of numerous different action items related to e-bikes. Some of those were to develop a safety video, change our municipal code or add a municipal code, look at engineering efforts, collaborate with some of our schools, community outreach, and an effort for licensing. So I just want to address some of the things that we've done. For first, we completed the safety video. It was made with an intro by then-Mayor Strickland, who introduced the video. We had a number of different partners that came from our private sector and appeared in the video. It's now on our website, and it was distributed to all other bike leasing businesses in the city. We adopted a new municipal code that the city council voted on. It's been successful and has been implemented. Public Works has already passed their master mobility plan and is working on implementing projects as they come, with, you know, budget and time and staff. Collaborating with schools, we now have all junior highs and high schools participating in the e-bike program, where the students have to complete a class, and once the class is completed, they are able to park their bikes on school property. And lastly, community outreach. We've had multiple different outreach efforts that are conducted. And licensing, this has been researched and discussed at the local level. We're currently working with Representative Dixon's office through our legislation. We're looking at potentially getting some statewide legislation for e-bikes, and we'll talk about that briefly. Since then, other things we've done, we conducted a public safety announcement with Chief Para and, at the time, Mayor Vandermark. That was on all of our social media outlets. We've done a number of different, specific targeted enforcement efforts. Anytime we learn of bike ride-outs or gatherings that happen oftentimes at Seacliff or other events with high schools, we make sure we do targeted enforcement efforts with not only our traffic enforcement officers, but also our helicopter. We're now treating Surrans and Talarias as e-motocycles, so those bikes that you see that are patently legal. We've come up with some different ways to address that, and we've been impounding those, and we'll talk about that during the enforcement efforts. And then continuing education outreach. We have a bicycle and pedestrian safety grant through the Office of Traffic Safety that mandates that we conduct a certain number of bike rodeos every month. We do presentations at events such as the Citizens Academy, Tuesday Night Street Fairs. We distribute flyers through water billing and through all the school districts, a flyer on the right-hand side that shows all the different laws that apply to e-bikes. And as far as the numbers go, there've been, in 2024, there's been 146 e-bike collisions. Obviously, that's a little bit of an increase from 2023. We now have a way to capture, we talked about this before, we have a way of capturing all e-bikes that are involved in collisions that are reported to the police department. It's about 56% of all bicycle-related collisions. So obviously, there's more electric bicycles that are out on the market as opposed to analog bicycles, so that probably explains why the percentage has increased so much. And the e-bike was not at fault in 36 of the 146. So we can see that e-bikes are certainly, you know, responsible for a lot of these accidents. When looking at the primary collision factor, which is like the one factor that caused the collision, anytime there's a traffic accident report, we define what the actual reason for the accident was. The first, and this is in 2023, the primary collision factor in most of these was for riding the wrong way or riding against traffic, which is something that we stress all the time in all the bike classes, the bike rodeos and everything else. The second is unsafe speed, and the third is unsafe turning movement. In 2024, that changed just slightly to show that unsafe speed was the highest collision factor. Again, riding against traffic and unsafe turning movement follow up with second and third. As far as ages for people that are involved in the collisions, as you can see, under 18 seems to be the largest category with people being involved, but followed up secondly by over 50 years old. It's somewhat interesting, because what we tend to see is people that are over 50 oftentimes haven't ridden a bike in a long time, or they're not comfortable riding a bike. They borrow one, they rent one, and they're not very comfortable riding. And then obviously, everybody under 18, we know that that's something that, you know, riding recklessly sometimes appeals to juveniles. In looking at, the fire department has also kept very good statistics. They've changed their database a little bit so that they can now capture more data. They see the same thing. 40% of their calls that they respond to are the under 18 age group, and 28% is over 50. So only 30%, just like us, fall in the middle, but the same thing, 28% of over 50 and 40% of under 18. It's also worth noting that when fire does respond to these calls, 43% of them are transported with ALS, meaning it requires advanced life support, and a paramedic will go with the ambulance. 31% is BLS, and then 25% means they don't transport at all.
Lieutenant, can I just ask a quick question? How many of these collisions, are these all with other cars or just anytime they're involved in any accident?
Anytime they're involved, I shouldn't say oftentimes. Sometimes it's single bike accidents, where someone crashes into a fixed object or hits a curb and falls. A lot of our elderly accidents are only involving themselves, i.e., they've been drinking, or they'll hit a curb or a parked car or something like- or they'll hit a curb or a parked car, something like that. I don't have the exact statistics for the under-18 age group, but I believe that the older ones are generally a single vehicle or single bicycle.
Do you know what percentage is with like a moving car?
I don't. I'm sure I can find that information for you. And then, lastly, just want to talk a little about enforcement. You know, in 2024, we issued 70 citations to e-bike riders, most of which, 50 or more of them, were for the new municipal code that we created. And then, when we talked about treating Talarias and Surrans as e-motocycles, we impounded 15 of those. Most of those 15 motorcycles were impounded on a 30-day hold, meaning they were towed by a tow yard. In the tow yard, they have to stay for 30 days, and then the owner of the bicycle or the motorcycle has to pay the storage fees as well. So, there's a financial component to that, to where you're not only depriving the person of the bike for 30 days, they also have to pay all the storage fees that are associated with it as well. So, that's been very effective. Just as a straw poll, we've seen a lot fewer e-motocycles on the road because of that, because there's some added consequences for that. And that is all I have for tonight. Are there any questions or anything that I can help address or provide clarity on?
Yeah, Toby, real quick. So, we brought this up in the Southeast Area Committee meeting, and then some residents asked if we could bring this up to the entire citywide. So, I appreciate this report. As you can see, there's been a ton of work we've done to give you guys more tools. Some residents have asked for specific enforcement examples. Can you give the two kind of high-profile ones at Seacliff with the kids that ran from the helicopter, et cetera?
Sure.
What ended up happening?
Yeah, so we've had a couple of different things. We noticed a large trend. You know, Seacliff Shopping Center, which is directly across from Huntington Beach High School, has a regional district field there, so there's a lot of home football games that are played there. What we've noticed is anytime when there's a home football game, we had people congregating over in the Seacliff Shopping Center directly across the street. Oftentimes, that would coincide with e-bike rideouts. So, when we had knowledge that was going to occur, or when we thought that was going to occur, we organized a number of different operations where we had not only undercover personnel, but a lot of traffic personnel on motorcycles and having the helicopter in the air. What we've noticed, too, is that chasing these e-bikes, oftentimes, they will run from us, unfortunately. They're hard to catch, whether it's an e-bike or an e-motorcycle, because they're endangering not only themselves, but also the public by running. And they're hard to catch, obviously, in a car. So, what we've been doing is having a motorcycle or a drone available, or I'm sorry, motorcycle, a helicopter or drone available to, when we initiate a traffic stop and they flee, to already have the helicopter up. And we had one night where we utilized our helicopter during one of these rideouts, and we ended up sighting and taking three different e-motocycles during that operation. So, that's not the only one. We actually had one the day of the marathon. There was a rideout that was going to occur. We are very proactive in monitoring that. Our intel unit will monitor that. We will make contact with organizers of these events to try and curb that or make sure they're not interfering with other specific events or traffic problems that we might have. But we're very proactive in trying to address those issues.
I guess, more importantly, just what was the highest charge that one of those kids received in terms of a...
So, one of the juveniles actually was booked for a felony, felony evading with will for want and disregard for the public because he ran multiple red lights, put pedestrians in danger, but also motorists in danger. We had people slamming on brakes to avoid collisions and whatnot. So, he was booked for a felony charge, and then his bike was taken for 30 days.
Yeah, that's an example. I just want to get out to the community. Obviously, this is a really challenging issue, and when these kids are breaking the law like that, you can't actually get a felony. So, please, help out the rest of the city and obey the rules of the road and ride safely because a lot of people are terrified, and it's a really challenging problem we're trying to solve. Thanks, Toby.
Anybody else? Grace, you have a question?
No, I just want to thank you for putting that together. That was, aside from homelessness, when we were campaigning, e-bikes was the second biggest issue people brought forward. And thank you for all the enforcement you guys have done. The first time I saw a little boy pulled over and you guys talking to him. It was sad because he was scared, but at the same time, you guys could have saved their lives. I've actually driven by at night, and they drive by, dark clothes, dark bikes, no lights, and I could have hit one of them. So, we're so lucky and blessed that we haven't, we haven't lost a child, so thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you.
All right.
That's it. City Treasurer's report. City Treasurer, please introduce the report. Speaker.
Thank you for the opportunity to present the City Treasurer's Quarterly Investment Report for the period ended December 31st, 2024. Public fund investing is unique. It's not the same as the way you would invest your brokerage account or your 401K. I'm just going to give you some basics about public fund investing. The primary mission of the City Treasurer is the preservation and return of the investments, or more simply, not to lose money. Public fund investing is governed by California state codes, which restrict the types and maturities of investments. For example, unlike your personal investment accounts, state law prohibits public fund investing in stocks or stock mutual funds. For these state, from these state requirements, the city's investment policy is created. This investment policy is reviewed annually by the Investment Advisory Board and adopted by the City Council on an annual basis. It has been certified by the California Municipal Treasurers Association and can be found on the City Treasurer's page on the city website. Public fund portfolios have unique requirements, such as paying bills, paying salaries, funding capital projects, funding pensions, et cetera. This requires certainty of fund availability. This leads to the goal of holding legal and suitable investments to meet the objectives of ensuring principal safety and liquidity. Those are ahead of income. Thus, this shifts the primary focus from return to minimizing risk, specifically the risks of losing money or of not having money available to pay the city's obligations. We do, however, want to optimize income. California Government Code 53600.5 specifically states the primary objective for public fund investing to be safeguard the principal. The secondary objective is to meet the liquidity needs of the agency, and thirdly, earn a market rate of return. And this return must be considered through budgetary and economic cycles. Lastly, with public fund investing is, of course, political risk. You and I would not want to tell the public that we made a bad investment and lost any money. For these reasons, public fund investing differs considerably from Wall Street investing or investing your personal money. As I mentioned, the California State Code establishes the types of allowable securities, how much of them can be purchased, and the maximum maturities. This is also reflected in the city's investment policy. The maximum term for specific securities is five years. This would apply to the most commonly used investments, such as US Treasuries, agencies, and corporate bonds. When there is a typical yield curve, you get a higher rate of return the longer out you invest. So, you would want to have some funds invested out at that longer term and that higher, and get that higher rate of return. However, recall the second objective is liquidity, meaning funds available to pay the city obligations. So, if we invested all the funds out five years, we would have no liquidity or no money to meet the city obligations, so that would not be a suitable strategy. There are also limits on the percentages of certain types of investments and the maximum percentage per issuer. For example, the portfolio is limited to a maximum of 30% of the total invested in corporate bonds, with a maximum of 10% of the total portfolio in any one issuer. There are also some minimum rating requirements. For corporate bonds, they must be in the A category. This means no bonds under the A category, like anything in the B or triple-B rating, and no high-yield bonds. So, these types of regulations limit legal investment options. The slide gives examples of the more commonly used investment types. So, you can see that investing the city's money differs substantially from personal investing with limits on the types and terms of investments. As well, public fund investing does not engage in active trading as a strategy to make money, but rather a passive investment style primarily holding funds to maturity while maintaining the ability to rebalance securities should there be such an opportunity. We do not try to time the market, but rather develop and stick to an investment plan over time. Because of all these requirements, comparing the return of a city's portfolio to that of your personal investments would be incorrect and inappropriate comparison. Additionally, comparing the return to an index is also not applicable. An index does not pay bills. It does not have cash requirements at certain times. An index also has times of negative returns, which would be unacceptable for the city portfolio. Finally, comparing returns to other cities' returns fails to recognize that each city has unique cash flow requirements. Some have large surpluses, some have large infrastructure requirements. Each has unique priorities. The standard against which performance of the portfolio should be evaluated is suitability. Does the portfolio provide sufficient liquidity to meet obligations without having to sell securities early and potentially take a loss? Does it have an appropriate level of interest rate risk? Is it adequately diversified? Does it own only legal securities? And does it achieve a market rate of return through budgetary and economic cycles? So, I'd like to provide a portfolio overview as of December 31st, 2024. Currently, funds within this portfolio for overnight availability are invested in the California Asset Management Program, or CAMP. CAMP is AAA-rated by S&amp;P. It has a portfolio maturity of 60 days or less and seeks to maintain a constant NAV of $1. The pool invests in high-quality, short-term debt obligations, mostly US debt, government obligations, and its current seven-day return is 4.52%. Other funds are invested in US Treasuries, US agencies such as Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, Federal Home Loan Bank, Supranationals. These are A-rated, multi-government institutions that provide financing and advisory services to their member countries to achieve the goal of improving living standards through economic growth. Some examples are the International Bank of Reconstruction and Development, or IBRD, under the World Bank, and the Inter-American Development Bank, or IADB. We also invest in money market funds and A-rated corporate bonds. Only the investment types allowed under California Government Code Section 53601 and the city's investment policy are utilized. As of December 31st, the book value of the portfolio was $390.1 million, with a market value of $385.2 million. As of December 31st, the portfolio was invested about 40% in US agencies, 18% in US Treasuries, about 16% in corporate bonds, 13% in Supranationals, with the remaining 13% in CAMP money markets and cash, or overnight availability. As of December 31st, approximately 35% of the portfolio will mature in one year or less. Approximately 25% will mature between one and two years, 20% between two and three years, and about 20% in three to five years. You may have heard the term WHAM, or weighted average maturity. This is the average length of time until the maturity of all bonds in the portfolio mature. So, at this time, it remains at about 1.75 years. For the quarter ending December 31st, a total of $25 million was invested over the quarter. $15 million was in US agencies, $5 million in US Treasuries, and $5 million in a Supranational. One US agency matured over the quarter for $5 million, and one Treasury matured for $3 million, for a total of $8 million maturing over the quarter. Earnings for the month of December were $988,461, an increase of approximately 29% from the same month in the prior year, with fiscal date earnings, year-to-date earnings, of $5.8 million, up 27% from the same time in the previous fiscal year. These higher earnings were due both to the increase in the interest rates and the higher average balance of the portfolio. The book yield was 3.27%, with an effective annual return of 3.17%. As you see here, we have selected compliance for the period. There were no compliance issues within the portfolio. These are some of the requirements that I had mentioned earlier that are set forth in the Government Code and the investment policy. So, for example, you can see in the first two lines, the Treasuries and Agencies have a maximum allowable of five years, and there's no maximum percent by type or issuer in those two categories. If you take a look toward the middle row, you can see for corporate bonds, as I mentioned earlier, the maximum maturity of five years, with 30% maximum total for the portfolio and 10% maximum per issuer. Another compliance requirement that is per the city's investment policy is stated at the bottom of this chart, which is a little difficult to read, but it states that no more than 50% of the portfolio may mature over four years and out. So, this would help ensure that there's adequate liquidity in the nearer term. If you'd like to see additional information about our portfolio or investments, you can go to this QR code, or you can go on the city's website and go under the tab Government and the tab City Treasurer. And there you can see the investment policy and all of the past information on investments. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Huntington Beach and present this information. I am available for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Don.
Thank you for the presentation, Lisa. Is our policy, is it set by the city, or is this county or statewide? Who sets our policy?
Well, the policy is developed by me, and it is based on both state government regulations as well as formats as set up by CDAC, so part of the California State Government, as well as sample policies as set up by the organizations, such as the California Municipal Treasurers Organization. So, we or I set up the policy, and we have been pretty much going with what state government says. There's one or two things that are a little bit more restrictive than state government, like the no more than 50% over four years, but that's where it comes from. Are those places, then it was reviewed, and it hasn't been a number of times by the California Municipal Treasurers Organization and received, I think we got 98 out of 100 the last time. So, they review it for content and accuracy.
Thank you. And in looking at the annual returns, right now, I think you said you were weighted about 3.17 on the annualized return so far. Is there a low and a high? Do you have a target that you shoot for that you would consider, hey, that was a good returning year following our monetary policies?
We do have a benchmark with which, in the past, has been the 1.5-year interpolated 12-month Treasury. However, because of the very quick rise in rates and the inverted yield curve over time, that went up so quickly that the portfolio kind of lagged that. But the reason for that was that our duration was around 1.5, 1.75. But as I said, there's really, the best way to analyze it is not only by looking at the rate. However, yes, you should look at the rate, but you should look at, again, the suitability, like I mentioned, all of those factors. But that is the benchmark that, it's not really a great comparison right now because, as I said, the rates went up so quickly, but that is something you could look at.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No. Thank you so much. Good report. Okay, I believe we'll go on to the city clerk's report. City Clerk, please introduce the report.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council.
Do we have to receive and file the report? Do we have to make that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry you're asking.
I'll move that we receive and file the treasurer's report.
Second.
All right.
Thank you.
Roll call? No, just receive and file.
Yeah.
Receive and file. Thank you. All right, city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. Today, I will be talking about the 2025 Safe and Sane Fireworks Stand and the application and lottery process. The application period will begin March 1st through March 31st. The permits are a maximum number of permits that may be issued during any one calendar year, and that shall be 16. Permits shall be issued to a qualified organization in each of the following categories. Civic organizations, five permits. High schools, five permits. Youth sports, five permits. And city foundation partnerships, one permit. The civic organizations are organizations operating within the city whose sole purpose is for civic betterment or charitable or religious purposes to and for the citizens of Huntington Beach. Excludes high school extracurricular activities or youth or adult sports groups. Approved applications... Approved applications will be entered into the lottery drawing held on April 15th at the city council meeting. High schools are as follows. High schools operating within the city that agree to use the proceeds for the benefit of valid student extracurricular activities. Sports shall be allowed to submit one application. Each public high school may be awarded one permit upon application receipt and approval. Each high school shall hold a lottery among its students, clubs, and organizations, and can dedicate its stand to not more than two groups. High schools that are private. A private high school may submit an application for the fifth high school permit. If no private high school applies, the four public high schools will be entered into the lottery drawing for the fifth high school permit. Youth sports. Organizations operating within the city whose main purpose is to benefit a valid youth sports activity. It excludes individual club or travel sports teams or high school extracurricular activities and sports groups. Approved applications will be entered into the lottery drawing that will be held April 15th at the city council meeting. And our city foundation partnership is the charitable organizations that have been established as a result of a partnership within a specific city department and has the primary purpose of financially supporting city services and operations. And a memorandum of understanding must be on file with the city. The annual awards goes as follows. In 2024, it was HB Fire Outreach Foundation. This year, it will be the HB Police and Community Foundation. And next year, it will be the Huntington Beach Council on Aging, per Resolution Number 2024-08. The application process. Prior to March 1st, the applicants successful in the 2024 application process will be notified by email of the 25 process, and a public announcement regarding the 2025 application process will be posted to local social media sites. The application. At the conclusion of the lottery drawing held on April 15th, representatives from the fire department will contact successful applicants to explain what happens next and to distribute temporary fireworks stand sales applications. And for more information, they can visit the online resources, the fireworks information 2025huntingtonbeach.ca.gov/fireworks, according to our HB Municipal Code, Chapter 5.90, fireworks. And the application will be online on March 1st, and people will be able to access that, download it, complete it, and return it to the clerk's office. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. I was going to pull number 17.
Mayor, I'd like to pull 15.
15, anybody else?
Mayor, I don't necessarily need to pull 12 and 13. I just had one question on 12 and one question on 13. I don't know if that's...
All right, we'll pull them real quick, though. All right, I'll move 11, 14, 16, and 18.
Second.
All right, call a roll, please.
Councilman Twiney?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Strickland?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to pull 12. City Clerk?
Don, you had a question?
Don. Don.
Sorry about that. On 12, on the part where we talked about the water and sewer, that said there was a sinkhole event in June, and then there was a statement that said that the emergency work started in September. So I don't know who may want to address that, but when I see the words "emergency work" on an event that started in June, started in September, I was just wondering, you know, what that meant.
So we did have a main break at that time. And so the whole process that we have to request reimbursement to cover those emergency services, we had to pay a contractor to cover that work.
I'd like to move the item if we're done with the question.
I'll second.
That's fine, thank you.
Clerk?
One moment, please. Councilman Twiney?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Pat Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Strickland?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item passes 7-0.
Okay, number 13, Don, go ahead.
On 13, under the construction management, there was a consultant. It said the consultant was needed after the work started. Once the project started, it was found that a consultant, construction management consultant, was needed to ensure timely completion. I'm just wondering how the timing was that the consultant was needed after the fact to ensure timely completion.
I believe this project is for the Ettinger Sewer Project.
I didn't write it in the notes. It's on the consent calendar, item 13.
Do you have the detail?
Um, yeah, I should have wrote.
Councilmember Kennedy, what bullet point are you talking about on the agenda there? Do you have it?
A lot of notes here today, so, my bad. No, let's see here. Okay, here it was. It's the sewer fund 511. 90,000 to cover remaining costs related to Ettinger Sewager. It was found that materials testing company and construction management consultant were needed to ensure timely completion. The work had been, yeah, I think that was it. That's it. Yeah, once the project started, it was found that a materials testing company and construction management consultant were needed to ensure the timely completion. So it's after it started, we're allocating 90,000 to cover the cost.
That is correct. There was some unforeseen. After we tested the soil, we had to seek out additional treatment for that soil, to treat it and then dispose of it. So it was unforeseen.
Okay, but that required a consultant and not just a remediation process?
No, it required a consultant.
Okay.
Contract, yes.
You done?
Yeah, all done.
All right.
I'd like to move that item.
Second.
All right, call a roll, please.
Councilmember Twiney?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Strickland?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to number 15. Casey, go ahead.
Yeah, Joe, I just wanted to pull this one to highlight it. Can you kind of walk the community through what we're doing?
Yes, tonight, staff is seeking a council resolution so that we can establish angled parking along Walnut from Main to Second Street. So it currently requires a city council authorization to take this action and modify the municipal code. Apparently, there is 20 parking stalls, 17 of which are metered parking, one is unmetered, and two unmetered 24-minute parking. And Walnut between Main and Third is primarily commercial use. Walnut between Third Street and Second Street is multifamily residential on the ocean side and predominantly commercial on the inland side of the street. So we want to add more parking in the downtown area. We plan on adding 14 additional spots along Walnut from 17 to 31. And we're also going to generate revenue at 95,000 a year. Neighbors, businesses have expressed support for the change, and we even did outreach along the neighboring residential area. They were not opposed to this at all. Funding is coming out of our in-lu parking fee to the amount of approximately $20,000, so we've got that covered. And we can implement it through our own in-house staff. So that, so we recommend adopting this resolution. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I just want to highlight it because as we're going to talk about ad nauseam for the next upcoming council meetings, we're in a very tough financial situation, as we'll touch on later with the Symphony of Flowers. No, we're not going to solve our budget issues by, you know, one single item, but every dollar counts. So this is going to add $95,000 a year in revenue to our general fund, and it kind of unlocks some options we have to do some upgrades on Main Street. So just want to point it out. It's long overdue. If you guys know that street right there, it's really wide, so this is a perfect place to put some angled parking in. So thank you, Joe. With that, I'd like to move the item.
Call a roll.
Councilmember Twiney?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Strickland?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Aye.
Item passes 7-0.
All right, move on to 17, and I've asked just one be pulled. Just for staff to kind of give a little background, how this thing was developed. I believe it started in like 2020 or 2021, and then take it from there, where it originated, what you can tell us. And then, Joe, I don't know if you're going to give the current request. So go ahead.
So background on this project is the Pelican Harbor Senior Apartments at 18431 Beach Boulevard at the intersection of Ellis. And it is developed by Jamboree Housing. This is affordable housing for seniors, and it consists of 43 units. As part of the development requirements, he's required to construct a streetlight, new concrete walkways along SR 39 along the project frontage, and it's a small area. However, it is maintained and owned by Caltrans. And so in order for a developer to assume maintenance responsibilities for the improvements along the Caltrans right-of-way, he has to make a deal with us, and then we have to make a deal with Caltrans, because Caltrans only has agreements with government agencies, not private developers or private entities. So that is part of our quest tonight. Here is the project location, Beach and Ellis. And as part of the requirements, they're required to maintain hardscape and one streetlight, as well as trash cleaning, disposal of any type of debris along the sidewalks, cleaning and basic maintenance. So that, you know, these agreements are necessary so that we can hold the developer responsible for maintenance along the lifetime of this project. Once again, it's in Caltrans right-of-way along Beach Boulevard, and we want to hold them responsible for maintenance of these improvements along Beach Boulevard. That concludes my staff report. You have any questions?
Ashley, you prepared to tell the background and give us a little background as I requested? Where this land came from, how it was developed? Where did Jamboree get the money to develop it? Or whomever staff, Travis?
Yeah, Jennifer.
Oh, Jennifer, I'm sorry.
I can answer that, Mayor.
Okay, sorry.
Just like Ashley, but Jennifer.
Yeah, close enough.
So what did you want to know about the project?
How the land came from, and we bought that land, right?
We provided an acquisition loan to Jamboree. So the city provided a $3 million acquisition loan to Jamboree consisting of our housing in lieu, so our housing trust fund money, which is restricted money that can only go towards affordable housing, and our home funds. And then...
And where did that money come from? Is that just tax money? Taxpayer's money from a fund somewhere?
Home funds are federal funds.
Okay.
And this site was in particular selected because it was required to be affordable housing, low-income housing, as part of an amendment to the specific plan that it's located in, the Beach and Ettinger Court, or specific plan, where the city had to identify six sites for affordable housing. This was around 2020. So the only thing that could go at this location was affordable housing. Is there any other information you would like?
Yeah, Jamboree, where'd they get their funding?
Most of their funding was tax credit financing. They also got a loan from the St. Joseph Healthcare Foundation. They also got funding from the County of Orange from the state. And then they got a permanent loan from private bank. So they had multiple funding sources for this project, as most affordable housing projects do.
So some of it is funded on a loan? Is that Jamboree's debt?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not all taxpayer, it's just a large part of its taxpayer money?
Correct.
The development, and specifically for low income?
Yes.
Seniors.
Seniors.
All right, anybody else got any questions? All right, I'll move the item.
Who was the second? Councilman Twiney?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Strickland?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item passes 7-0.
All right, we're going to reopen. We're actually never closed the public hearing on number 19.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, City Council. I have a short staff report, just to remind us where we ended at the last city council meeting. Marisol HB LLC is seeking a financial, is seeking financing for their senior living community in Huntington Beach known as the Marisol, just across the street from City Hall here. A public, the city council held a study session on January 21st, briefing the community and the city council on this topic. And as you mentioned, we had a public hearing held on February 4th of this year, which was continued tonight for this council to continue to consider it. The resolution that's on the agenda item tonight will provide for the approval of a joint JPA agreement relating to the California Public Finance Authority, adding the city of Huntington Beach as an additional member to the authority. It'll approve the issuance of California Public Finance Authority Revenue Bonds to the benefit of Marisol HB LLC. And it also will approve the payment in lieu of tax agreement, or pilot agreement, to the city related to property taxes, to the benefit of the city. The JPA agreement related to California Public Finance Authority will be adding the city of Huntington Beach as an additional member to the authority and limiting the scope of the agreement that would be necessary to appropriate the, and to facilitate the financing of the Marisol HB LLC located in Huntington Beach. The resolution provides the authorization for CalPEFRA to issue exempt obligation bonds on behalf of the applicant in the amount not to exceed $325,000, or $100 million. The city is not, and the city will not be, a part of these bonds as discussed at the last meeting.
Zero liability.
Zero liability to the city. The applicant has offered to enter into this pilot agreement with the city of Huntington Beach. As the owner of the property will be a nonprofit and which will provide the city of Huntington Beach tax-in-lu funds to the city, as long as they're a nonprofit. Let's see here. Since the last meeting, Marisol, there was a question the city council asked if, for the protection of the city, if they would provide a personal guarantee. And in lieu of that personal guarantee, Marisol has offered to put the city's pilot agreement in priority position over the bonds that would be issued to Marisol. And with that, I'm available for any questions you have. Scott Strusner of Marisol is here for any questions the council may have. And Cyrus Tabari is available as well.
Does anybody have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you do the ex parte, please?
Oh, wrong. I got it. As a reminder, public hearing was continued and remained open from the February 4th meeting. Does anyone have any ex parte communication disclosed on item 19? No? Okay, we already had the report. Councilmembers, do you have any questions on the report? None? All right, do we have any people signed up to speak?
We have no speakers.
All right.
But we do have supplemental communication.
All right.
We have three... We have three, on item number thirteen, nineteen, we have three email communications received regarding the proposed adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero five pertaining to Marisol HBLLC.
All right, having no speakers, open it up for discussion, council. Anybody? Oh, yeah, we've got to close the public hearing. It's now closed. There. Council, do we have any discussion?
Just have one question for the applicant. Appreciate you guys looking into that and obviously putting us in first position. When do you guys think you'll start construction? Because I know you already have your building permits.
We actually don't have a building permits quite yet, because it's subject to when the oil well, the abandonment approvals-
Okay.
-are going to be finished.
Perfect.
And then once that's finished, the building department will issue the building department.
So, when do you get, what's your guesstimate on when you'll start?
We're hoping for May.
And then how long do you think the construction process will be?
Approximately twenty-four months.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Grace?
So, I didn't know if, I should say one other thing, just in case it was forgotten. You asked about communications. I did have one phone call with the mayor. The mayor might have forgotten on that.
Oh, yeah, we had talked before council meeting.
Yeah, so I just wanted to.
All right, Travis was there. All right. Anybody else? Don?
I just want to make a couple of just brief statements. So, city council is a position that is not easy. Let me put it to you that way. It certainly doesn't pay well. I'm doing this for one reason. I do love this city, and the decisions that I will vote on, I will vote in a way that I think is best for the city. So, you read a lot on the forums, you know, that term, it's in a stock market, when you sell a stock too much, it's called oversold. The term that I just keep seeing, grift, grift, grift. I did a little research. Before you do business with a company like the Bloom Family Foundation, or anybody for that matter, you want to know who they are. So, they were established in two thousand nine. They do dabble in healthcare, arts, higher education, human services. In twenty twenty-three, they awarded millions of dollars in grants. One of the notable examples of the foundation was in twenty twenty-two, a forty-five million dollar gift to the Northwestern Medicine, the Bloom Heart Hospital Foundation. So, I believe this is a legitimately charitable institution, foundation. They entered into a pilot program to the benefit of the city. Yeah, they did want the funding, and they do need this to be part of it. They probably could have gotten funding elsewhere, but they chose to at least incorporate the city and do the best they could to be good neighbors. And what I learned in the planning commission as well is, this was voted on twenty twenty. This didn't even make it to the city council because there was no conditional use permit, and you cannot just simply deny a project without finding. So, we can't sit up here and say, "We don't like it. We want to overturn the entitlements." So, it just doesn't happen that way. So, with all that said, there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be upset, but there's going to be a lot of value for the city. It's going to build senior housing, and I'm not here advocating for like, "Wow, look at, let's build high density," because it's not high density. The bottom line is, they've done right by the city to the best of the ability. It was entitled in twenty twenty. It's going to get built, and we're going to at least lean taxes where we could have lost out one hundred percent. In that, by that right, I'm thankful. I will be supporting the project, and, you know, thank you for including the city. That's all I can say. This is not easy.
Don, I'll kind of just dovetail on top of that. So, just to refresh the community, this use is allowed in the general plan, right? So, there was issues with this other project. We know about it, Bull's Chicken Water, that required a specific plan, same exact project. So, it fits in the general plan. The issue is, they got their entitlements in twenty twenty, when interest rates were much lower. Now, of course, interest rates have exploded, and so the options are, they do nothing and wait for interest rates to go down, and this property sits with a white vinyl fence around it, vacant, or they pursue this creative financing option to the JPA, which the city has zero liability. They're going to do a pilot payment in lieu of taxes structure to the city. So, we're going to get property tax earlier than we would if it just sat there vacant, waiting for interest rates to go down. We're protected in first position. It's a win for the city. Makes a lot of sense, and that's why I would support it.
Casey, if I could just add too, if it remained just a lot with a white fence around it, we wouldn't be collecting more than somewhere to the, around twenty thousand dollars or so in property tax. But if this project does get done, the city would be getting approximately a quarter million dollars directed to the city through the payment in lieu of taxes. Huge benefit.
And also, just Gracie touched on it last time, this is an example of a joint power authority agreement can be structured correctly, that protects the city and its taxpayers, unlike the Elon and Breakwater Joint Power Authority Agreement, where the city is losing, we're losing six hundred thousand dollars a year in property tax revenue for thirty-five years. Pretty sure we need that money right now with our budget issues. So, this is an example of a JPA can be done correctly, that protects the city and its taxpayers. We actually get the property tax money early instead of waiting for it to be developed.
All right, I'll make the motion move as recommended.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Twining?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Strickland?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item passes seven zero.
All right, move on to administrative items, number twenty. Staff, please introduce the report.
Good evening, Mayor Burns, members of the city council. On, on April fifth, nineteen seventy-five, Huntington Central Library Building was completed by architects Richard and Dion Neutra. The city has a practice of producing and placing plaques and customary, is customary in honoring milestones at various city facilities and public spaces. To continue this practice, staff recommends placing a commemorative plaque alongside other plaques on the exterior of the building near the central library entrance. Before you this evening are two different renderings of plaques. The first is, was approved by the Community and Library Services Commission on February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. The second rendering was, a second rendering recommended by Councilman Williams. And so, this evening, council has the opportunity to discuss approving the design that was approved by Community and Library Services Commission, considering the alternate plaque designed by Councilman Williams, or do not approve and as designed and produce alternate direction to staff.
Okay. I'm waiting for Gracie to come back. There she is. All right. All right. Want to discuss that?
So, we took some of the recommendations made by some of the speakers. They didn't like the eagle. We changed the eagle. They didn't like the placement. We changed the placement. We enlarged commemorating fifty years, so I'm presenting this one for consideration as well for, to my fellow council members. It's over here. I don't know, I guess enlarge it.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Motion.
All right, I'll give you guys time to walk up to the screen and read it. It's right there.
Yeah, but.
All right, well, then you won't be offended.
Chat, chat has.
Chad, go ahead.
All right, maybe I can try and read it for you guys. You still have the magical allure and galvanizing and adventurous, and I would just really emphasize, I'd emphasize that words have meaning. Words have meaning. So, "Make America Great Again" has meaning. There are some people that have difficulty with comprehension, and they don't understand the meaning of words. These are the same types of people that don't seem to understand what is a woman. The issue isn't with the meaning of the words. The issue, it seems, with some folks would be, who said it? Because when Ronald Reagan said it, it was no problem. When Bill Clinton said the words, "Make America Great Again," it was no problem. It seems to not be an issue with the meaning of the words. It seems to be an issue for some with who said it.
Ah, be quiet.
And there it is, right there. That's the real issue. It's not the meaning of the words, and words have meaning. It's who said it. And if anything, I think this is just exemplary of, you know, DTS, Donald Trump Derangement Syndrome is very real.
All right.
And so, there's no doubt about it that we are living in a time that truly is the golden era, that is the bottom line of the plaque. We are in this golden era. We just hit stock market highs today. We are in financial affluence. We are in a time of law and order. And if you look at the bottom of the plaque, you'll notice some other words where people are not offended. It says, "Through hope and change." Nothing offensive about that, is there? "Through hope and change." Who said that? That was Obama. "Through hope and change, our nation is built back better." Built back better, who said that? That was Biden. There's no issue with "Through hope and change, our nation is built back better." And what have we entered into? The golden era. We are in the golden era now of "Making America Great Again." And for those that don't have comprehension issues with the words, the plaque is a good.
All right, we've had a move.
Other thing I'd like to add.
Go for it.
There was some concern about how taxpayer money was.
Chad, can you hold on? People, please be quiet. Let the speaker speak. You guys had your turn, please, or leave. Go ahead. But please be quiet.
There's some concern about whether or not it was taxpayer money that was spent to make this plaque. So, just so the public is aware, it's completely privately funded. We actually had to start turning down the donation. So, the plaque is privately funded.
And also, due to threats of vandalism, tearing it out, all the threats online, we actually raised an extra thousand dollars for spotlight to protect the plaque. Okay, so there's a motion.
Okay, and a second. And so, can we have the roll call?
First was McKeon, second was Strickland. Councilmember Twining?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Strickland?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item passes seven zero.
Okay. Item number twenty-one. Staff, please introduce the report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. As Councilmember Strickland mentioned earlier in the evening, our city attorney, Michael Gates, is resigning from his position due to a accepting of position at the United States Department of Justice. The Huntington Beach Charter in section three twelve states that when there's a vacant position in any of the elective offices, it shall be filled by the city council. So, the resolution prepared for you tonight to consider is a resolution appointing Mike Vigliotta, Vigliotta, sorry, Mike.
Vig.
I've only known you for eighteen, twenty years, appointing Mike Vigliotta, the city attorney for the city of Huntington Beach, upon Michael Gates's last day, as soon as he vacates the position. I'm here to answer any questions that any of the council may have.
I'll make that motion.
I'll gladly second.
Yes.
I just want to reiterate what I said earlier, and I think it's important to repeat. Michael Gates did a phenomenal job for the city of Huntington Beach, and I will tell you, we've been in a lot of fights with the state for the overreach, and we're fighting for the quality of life of the people here in Huntington Beach, from being a non-sanctuary city, to having voter identification, to making sure that we don't have the high-density housing coming down our throats to urbanize a beautiful suburban community. Michael Gates has done a remarkable job at defending the city, and I know no one that knows and loves Huntington Beach better than Michael Gates. That said, if there is going to be someone that steps in this position, I am glad it's Michael Vigliotta. Michael's very talented. He's worked with Michael Gates for years. He's a resident of Huntington Beach. He's done a remarkable job in the city of Orange. In fact, a lot of council colleagues and friends of mine in Orange are mad that we're taking you back here in Huntington Beach. And I have the utmost faith. We have a lot of fights that we need to win for the people of Huntington Beach, and I have the utmost faith that you're going to do a remarkable job, and you have tough shoes to fill, but I know you're going to do a great job and fight and do great by the city of Huntington Beach. So, I'm honored to vote for you, and I'm looking forward to working with you in the years to come.
I'd also like to echo that. Michael Gates did an amazing job here for Huntington Beach. Although we're sad to see him go, I am very hopeful that he can help us from DC to fight some of this overreach by Sacramento. And I'd like to welcome Vig. Vig left us eighteen months ago. He couldn't resist, so now he's back. And when we sat down and we discussed some of the cases, it was really, it was really great to hear you say, "Well, I can't believe this case is still going on." That was, you're very familiar with these cases. You authored some of them. So, you're stepping in pretty much where you left off. So, welcome back, and we're happy that you're back.
Case.
Vig, how long were you with the city before you left for a brief eighteen months?
I was here eighteen years. I guess eighteen's sticking with me.
Yeah, so I just want to like, you know, update the community that, you know, Vig has been here for so long, institutional knowledge. You can ask Michael Gates, like, he was Michael Gates' mentor. So, him and Vig and Gates were side by side writing a lot of these lawsuits. He was always following, even though when he was in Orange. So, rest assured, we're in great hands. I always call him the wizard behind the curtain. He's the brains up there. And so, we're happy Vig's back, and couldn't be happier for you. Go Vig.
I too want to congratulate Michael Gates for his promotion to Washington DC. He'll definitely be missed here in Huntington Beach. And I'd like to welcome back our new, hopefully after the vote, city attorney, Mike Vigliotta, who I got to know very well on the planning commission, who was valuable to me as I learned and grew on the planning commission. And when he left, I told him how much I was going to miss him. He gave me his cell number, said, "Call me anytime." I appreciate that. And when I heard you were coming back, I couldn't have been more excited. So, welcome back and look forward to working with you.
It's already been said, but certainly miss Michael Gates. He had the heart of a lion. He's a fighter, love of Huntington Beach, second to none, and a true talent. Very polarizing man who put Huntington Beach first, and now he'll put the United States first. I spent time with Mr. Mike Vigliotta, Vigliotta, over here in the planning commission. He is a very smart constitutional attorney. We're very happy and fortunate to have him if he gets appointed here. And with that said, good luck, Mr. Gates, and let's vote on Mr. Mike.
I just want to say, Mike Gates, I can't just say he didn't, he taught us a lot. He gave us a lot of good information. He kept us going ahead, and I appreciate that. He was a great source of information. I don't think we could have done what we did without him. And to that, I thank him for what he's done for us and the city. And I look forward to Vig, because I know Vig's probably a step ahead on the lawyer side, but not the politician. But we'll get, but I appreciate both of you, and I look forward to working with you, and I still look forward to working with Michael. So, thank you both. All right.
I'd like to concur too, that Michael Gates will be greatly missed. I hope that he isn't a stranger. We've got a friend that has moved on to high places, and that's always good to have friends in high places, and I really look forward to working with Vig in our corner.
All right, clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilman Twining?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Strickland?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item passes seven zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I don't have a speech, but thank you all. Thank you for the confidence.
Oh, there'll be time for a speech.
I'll have plenty of time to talk.
That's a welcome change.
All right, number twenty-two.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Today, I will be presenting two separate reports of effect on proposed initiative. The first one that I will be going through is on the Community Parent Guardian Review Board, so I'll be offering two separate presentations. So, the citizen initiative was to repeal ordinance number four three one eight by deleting Huntington Beach Municipal Code, Chapter two dot six six, Community Parent Guardian Review Board for procurement of children's library materials, and adding section two dot three zero dot zero nine zero, selection and use of library materials. On January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, the city council adopted resolution number two zero two five dash zero four, accepting the certificate as to verification of signatures from the Orange County Register of Voters. Also, on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, the city council ordered a report of effect of proposed initiative- proposed initiative to be given within 30 days. Staff is now returning with this report for the above initiative. Pursuant to Election Code 1405A, should the city decide to order an election, the election shall be held at the jurisdiction's next regular election occurring not less than 88 days after the date of the order of election. Article 7, Section 700 of the city's charter provides for general municipal elections to be held in the city on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November in each even-numbered year, ultimately meaning that the next general election per our city charter would be November 3, 2026. Pursuant to Election Code 1405B, the city may also call a special election for the purpose of submitting an initiative measure to the voters before the date on which the initiative measure would appear. The special election would be held not less than 88 days, no more than 103 days after the order of the election. Should the City Council elect to call a special election, staff also requests adoption of Resolution Numbers 2025-09, 2025-10, 2025-11, and 2025-12. As mentioned, as part of the report, we were going to be coming back with some of the costs that would impact the decision. So first off, Orange County Registrar of Voters provided us the following costs of submittal for the initiative to the voters. So the first cost provided by the Orange County Registrar of Voters would be for the November 3, 2026, general election, which ranged from $340,515 to $399,499. The quote provided for the special election is $1,190,478, between, up to $1,315,405. The cost to add the second initiative, which I'll go over in the next report, would add an additional $8,500 to either one of those options. And then previously, as I mentioned, the cost is in addition to the $54,702.60, which is due to the Registrar of Voters for the verification of signatures. So the recommended action tonight is for the City Council to receive and file this report, and to either adopt ordinance number 4239, an ordinance of the city of Huntington Beach amending the Huntington Beach Municipal Code by deleting Chapter 2.66 thereof and adding new Section 2.30.090 thereof, or submitting a citizen initiative to the voters at the next general election on November 3, 2026, or call for a special election to be held not less than 88 days nor more than 103 days after order of the election, or do not approve and direct staff accordingly. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Mayor, I would like to move that we receive and report and have staff come back with a resolution.
Second.
All right, vote.
Before you vote, a resolution to call for the elections.
Correct, correct.
To confirm the general election or special election.
We're going to come back with that answer. We're going to work with staff in the meantime. But we're going to call the election, and we're going to move with the city attorney's staff on whether it's going to be the general election or a special.
Can you just clarify the motion one more time?
We're going to move and receive, and then report, and then have staff come back to us with a resolution.
Calling for the election.
Calling for the election.
What date?
The date is not specific. It's going to come back when we report it back, when the city and the staff comes back with a report.
Councilmember Strickland, if I could add, maybe within 30 days, if we bring it...
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Twining.
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McKean.
Yes.
Mayor Burns.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark.
Yes.
Councilman Strickland.
Aye.
Councilman Williams.
Aye.
Item passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move the same, we know it's going to come up with the same kind of citizens' report. I'm going to move the same move to receive a report and have staff come back with a resolution of the election.
Second.
All right, it's been first and second. Any questions, any comments? All right, please do a roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McKean.
Yes.
Mayor Burns.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark.
Yes.
Councilman Strickland.
Aye.
Councilman Williams.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right, move on to number 24. Staff, please introduce the report. Butch. You're good? Okay. All right, staff, please. Ashley Wysocki.
Good evening, council, and mayor and members of the city council. This evening, we are asking council to consider a license agreement between the city of Huntington Beach and Flowers of the Sky Entertainment for the management and operation of the Symphony of Flowers in a portion of Huntington Central Park East. Before you are the contract terms and fees. In year ones, in year one, this table will list what we will receive as far as revenues, and those change in years two and three based on the various categories of per-ticket, parking, sponsorship, food and beverage revenues, and then various special benefits and restoration fees of $50,000 annually. On the subsequent slides, there are various key points illustrating what the symphony's obligations are, most notably that they shall operate between the city's Civil War reenactment and the city's American Revolutionary War reenactment. The second slide also details the various obligations required by Symphony for discussion this evening. This slide details what the key points for the city's obligations are. And this slide illustrates that the city will receive a one-time license fee of $15,000 and a portion of event revenue and various fees as covered in previous slides. Additionally, the city will receive 60% of parking fees, and these fees will be used for capital improvement projects benefiting the Huntington Central Park irrigation and for the Huntington Central Library fountains. The city has guaranteed a minimum annual revenue of $150,000 per year. And an addendum to the final master environmental impact report for master plan of recreation uses for Central Park, City of Huntington Beach, California. As demonstrated by the analysis in the addendum, the Symphony of Flowers would not result in any new significant impacts, nor would it substantially increase the severity of previously identified significant impacts. Rather, all of the impacts associated with the Symphony of Flowers are within the envelope of impacts addressed in the certified 1999 FMEIR, and do not constitute new or substantially increased significant impacts. And so before you this evening is a recommended action to approve and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a license agreement between the city of Huntington Beach and Flowers of the Sky Entertainment for management and operation of the Symphony of Flowers in Huntington Central Park East, and to approve addendum to the final master environmental impact report for master plan of recreation uses for Central Park, City of Huntington Beach, California Symphony of Flowers project, as adequate and complete in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act requirements. And so at this time, staff are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take it back to a time when I was mayor. Met, and I did a lot of town halls throughout the city. In fact, I believe I did over 20 town halls. One of the biggest items that I heard from leaders in this community over and over again is that we needed more cultural events here in Huntington Beach, and we need more entertainment opportunities for families here in Huntington Beach. I also heard from members throughout the community that we need to work on big events, like the airshow and Dark Waves and others, events that can help us meet our budgetary goals in terms of getting revenue into the city, not raising taxes, and being able to provide for public safety, parks, and infrastructure. This event does both. In fact, this event will be a signature event for the city. Main estimates, most of the estimates when we're looking at the estimates of the revenue for the city, will be at the very low end, a million dollars, when you look at the ticket sales, the sharing that we get as a city, along with the parking revenue. And this will generate much-needed income for the city at a time that we absolutely need it. This actually passed environmental review. It was done extensively, and it passed environmental review. When I heard about this event, the person who's doing this event was a person who created many of the other events, Circus Soleil being one of them. And when I heard that they were looking for a city in somewhere in California, and specifically, hopefully, Southern California, I met with the operator. The operator came out from, the gentleman came out from Canada. We got together, and I did whatever I could to sell Huntington Beach. I said, "We're a perfect city for what you would like to bring to Southern California, and it'll be a win-win, win for our community, and win for our families and our citizens to put on a show like this." And so when I hear a lot of the talk and chatter, people are saying, quote, "You're ignoring the majority of the community." The vast majority, we're not listening to the vast majority. And by the way, that confuses me a little bit, because those are the same people that said, "We weren't listening to the vast majority of Huntington Beach," when we were talking about voter identification, when we're talking about our flag ordinance, and when we put it to the vote of the people. The vote of the people overwhelmingly supported our position on those items. Just because a group of loud folks come to city council doesn't mean that's the actual representation of the whole city of Huntington Beach. And so when we're looking at, when we're looking at this project, this is a project that brings cultural awareness. It's a project that brings families together. It's a project that helps us bring in, once needed, revenue at a time when we need it. And it's also a signature event where we're going to be put on the map on a person who does these types of events. And every event that he's been doing has been, has been remarkable for the communities that he's been coming into. And I really hope that we pass this ordinance, and we pass this, so we can bring a cultural event like this to Huntington Beach, because it'll be a win-win, a win for our city coffers that fund our public safety. It's a win for our families to do events and have the entertainment. And again, we did an extensive environmental review, and the environmental review passed. And so therefore, I would like to move this item, and I'm hopeful that this measure passes.
If you guys indulge me, I just want to go on a little riff here and have a frank conversation with the community. So our biggest challenge right now is that we have a structural budget deficit, where our reoccurring expenses exceed our reoccurring revenues. Next year, we are projected to have an $8.8 million deficit. We touched on it last time. Our city is 116 years old today, and every city council's actions up to now has led us to this financial situation. The proverbial can has been kicked down the road, and we are at the end of the road. Jen, can you put up that first image? You guys remember that? Huntington Beach finalizes pay raise while loss of $16 million to pandemic is expected? Yeah, that was in 2020. So here we are now, having to pay that bill. So the only reason that council had a surplus back then was because of COVID money, which is now gone. And we have projected deficits in our first two annual budgets when we were elected, and we solved those and created surpluses. But these structural issues of reoccurring expenses exceeding reoccurring revenues need to be resolved. It's just facts. Over the upcoming city council meetings, we will be publicly going through every single city department to find efficiencies and reduce expenses, as well as hosting two budget town halls with the community. We have nothing to hide. We want to be fully transparent. We need to work on this together. We're also reviewing the over 100 city leases we have in the city to see if there are any leakage, unpaid rent, and to ensure we're receiving market rent for our assets. We're reviewing all of our assets, the sports complex, the equestrian center, metal lark, to maximize their potential. We're looking at private-public partnerships to help offload some of our maintenance costs and overhead. Everything is on the table because it has to be. One comment made by resident earlier, the airshow settlement was $4.9 million with payments spread out over six years, and then we successfully sued the oil company and brought back $5.25 million to the taxpayers. So while we continue to create operational efficiencies in our city departments to reduce expenses, we have limited levers we can pull to create more revenue. Property taxes are our number-one source of revenue, and we, as a community, through electing us, have decided not to develop high-density housing. That means we have to attract more businesses to invest, which we are doing. As a reminder, our streamline program created in one year a 23% increase in certificates of occupancy issued. We need to attract more residents and visitors to shop here to increase our sales tax revenue, and we need to host more events where appropriate to create revenue and fill our hotels. The Symphony of Flowers is a four-month show, and with only a one-year commitment, with the potential to bring in, read the contract, with the potential to bring in approximately, Tony touched on it, anywhere from $400 to $1 million in revenue to our city through revenue share on the ticket sales, parking alone, not to mention the sales tax generated from visitors dining in our restaurants, shopping in our businesses, and staying in our hotels. We have performed our environmental impact report that shows no nature, no wildlife will be disturbed, and we have structured the contract to ensure the park will be maintained, preserved, and trees protected. Parking areas and transportation have been defined and coordinated. With those guardrails in place, it's worth trying this event from the operators of Cavalia and the founders of Cirque du Soleil for one year. I hope people realize that the location of this event is the same exact location where the Revolutionary and Civil War reenactments are held, where cannon and musket blasts occur, and there hasn't been any damage to the balance of wildlife. I'm pretty sure that is a more intense experience for the wildlife than illuminated flowers in the ground and a water wall show with ambient music, not to mention the 10 concerts in the park, where 2,000 to 3,000 people attend each concert with also no damage to the balance of wildlife. The most disheartening aspect of this whole process is the amount of false information that has been pushed online in order to sow discontent and outrage. We greatly respect and appreciate all of the hard work the Angles have put into the park over the years, and we had such a great relationship with them. Whenever they needed something, the city delivered. When Sherry would email us about homeless at the Slater parking lot, we would jump on it. We then created restricted parking time periods to solve the homeless issue. When Steve contacted Gracie and I personally to help secure 50 trees for the 50th anniversary of Central Park, we delivered. Our relationship was such that the Angles knew that whenever they needed something, they would contact us directly, and we would deliver. Because of that, it was very disheartening to see them post such public negative comments about the Symphony of Flowers based on assumptions, rather than reaching out to us personally and privately, as they have always done, in order to get the factual answers to their concerns. After those negative public posts, we contacted Steve Engel to meet at the location of the event this past Friday to answer any questions or concerns he had. The meeting was very positive, and afterwards, he was comfortable in knowing that the park will be maintained, preserved, and the trees protected and irrigated. He said he would make a positive post stating he had received answers to his questions and concerns, and he agreed that if he hadn't any more questions or concerns, he would contact us directly. He even exchanged numbers with Chad and the show producer, Glenn. We reiterated how much we appreciate Steve, and appreciate all the work he has done, and told him that we want him involved in this process, so that if he sees anything amiss, he can contact us immediately so that it can be remedied. He agreed then, he agreed, and then we took smiling photos before ending the meeting. Jen, can you please put up images two and three? Steve, very happy, great meeting. Took a selfie. It was a great meeting. We all thought really good about it on Friday. I told Travis, that was a great meeting. Glad Steve got to see it himself. 24 hours later, Steve posted that we have nesting bald eagles, and posted a petition on change.org to stop the Symphony of Flowers. After our meeting, I would expect that if he had actual factual information on nesting bald eagles, he would have contacted us immediately to discuss, but unfortunately, he chose a different route. Then, most shockingly, he made a post directing people, Jen, can you put up slide four, to directing people to contact Attorney General Rob Bonta in order to shut the event down because, quote, "The state aren't fans of our city council to start with, so we must also reach out to our congresspeople, senators, and also Rob Bonta to keep him apprised." Steve further says, "While there isn't avenue for him to get involved yet, keeping him apprised is important due to this current cases and negative relationship between the council and the state." Can you guys believe that? He's directing people to... He's directing people to contact Rob Bonta, and this is from someone that we are supposed to have a professional, friendly, and symbiotic relationship with. Again, if he had any evidence of nesting bald eagles, our national bird, why wouldn't he just tell us? The voters elected us to push back against the state's high-density housing mandates, and we are currently in two lawsuits over this with the state and Rob Bonta. These high-density projects are permanent and will forever change our city's landscape, much more so than a temporary event in the park that lasts four months. To elevate this issue to that level and direct people to contact Rob Bonta the day after we had a productive, friendly, and cordial meeting where we all left feeling good and on the same page is highly disappointing, and frankly, for me, it's beyond the pale. How can the city have a relationship with volunteer groups if they aren't willing to professionally and responsibly communicate with the city when they have issues or concerns? We have structural budget issues we need to solve as a community, and we need to have these tough conversations about revenue generating ideas, but if we can't even have respectful and honest dialogue, then we have no chance of getting out of this financial situation.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just wanted to point out a couple things, the contrast that I see, and it took me a while to get my, my arms around this initiative, but terms like destruction of quality of life, destroying our air and water quality and the environment, destruction of our infrastructure, inundating our streets with traffic and congestion. Well, you may have thought that was the EIR for the Symphony of Flowers, but that's the EIR that the citizens demanded we sign the housing element. Forget about what that EIR says. Forget about the air and water pollution. Forget about the destruction, the inundation of traffic and noise and infrastructure. Sign that statement of overriding consideration, city council, that's a must. So, that, that EIR must be disregarded. Now, the EIR now, on the other hand, for the Symphony of Flowers must be false, falsified, because it says those same types of things. So I don't know if you can have it both ways. In one hand, you want to disregard and falsify an EIR. On the other hand, you must say disregarded. So, what way is it? Now, remember, you want to fix the roads, fill the potholes, reduce our deficit, don't raise our taxes, don't cut services, do not leverage our assets, which is all we have as a city, is our beach, our parks, our, our sports complex, the equestrian center, things that are assets. Don't leverage those, but do everything else and figure it out. It's just not reality. So, we negotiated a unilateral right to cancel this show at the end of the first year if it doesn't perform. Chad, I'm going to give him some props here. When, when the original agreement came to us, we were not happy with the ticket share, no sponsorship share, and Chad was adamant that these were must-haves to the point where everybody thought there is no way we are going to get any of that. So Chad moved the needle from two bucks a ticket to three, to five in year two, to five nights where every ticket sold is allocated revenue to the city. 20% sponsorship share, which can generate a lot of income if we do a good job sponsorship, that was never on the table. 20% of the concessions, never on the table. So that made this thing at least something viable that if this is a product that the, that the citizens love and attracts the type of business that we want as a city, drives revenue, and is a symbiotic welcoming experience, then we will see this move forward. If this is not that, we will unilaterally exercise our right to cancel this. We'll collect our 150,000 in addition to the 50,000 park restoration, which additionally, if there is damage that's traced to the project itself, beyond the 50,000, they're committed to making good on that as well. So, we've done everything possible to cover the bases. This is another thing that I said earlier, this is not an easy job. There's going to be a lot of people that are going to be, yes, that's a great initiative, pass it. And there's going to be a lot of people that said, you're out of your mind. We have to do as leaders what we think is best for the city without hurting, with hurting as few people as possible. This is something that I can support at this point based on the parameters that are in place, and let's hope it's successful, Glenn. Let's bring a world-class event. Tony, promise me this is going to be a signature event that we're going to look back on, and maybe this will be this generation's Pacific City. If you all recall, I've been here my whole life, when Pacific City was going to get built, everybody was up in arms. Don't take away the old Huntington Beach Inn, the Driftwood, the, that hamburger joint, whatever that place was called, I forgot, the Grindr, you know, this is going to be a disaster. Those same people, including myself, enjoy Pacific City now, the shops, the dining, and it did not do anything but enhance Huntington Beach. It did not harm it. So, it's just one of those things, change comes. This should hopefully be positive, and I will be supporting it. Took me a long time to get to this decision. Somebody's going to send me some hate mail, somebody might say, good job. With that said, that's not how I base my decisions. I base it on what I think is best for the city, and I think, at this point in time, it's time to drive more revenue, and hopefully, it's a world-class event that we can look back on proudly.
I won't be as long as those last two. You may have noticed before this, when this item was first called, the mayor, Mayor Burns called my name because I had told him earlier today that I'm going to have to recuse myself. And he said, why? And I said, I, I can't support this. And he asked me why. And I said, that I donated a lot of money to the tree society that's Central Park, and it would be a conflict of interest. But later on, I, I recognized all the things that everybody has said. Chad worked very, very hard, spent a lot of time bending the arm of Mr. Glenn Becerra over there. I had time to read the EIR. I've seen the pictures of, of an eagle circling the, the park. I can't even say that was Central Park because it's just an eagle in the sky. Everybody says the eagle's a protected species. I looked it up. It is a protected species from being taken, or shot, or captured. You can't, the law does say you can't disturb their nest, so then people started saying that there was nests. Find the nest, and the, and the show won't go on. But, okay, good, find it. I think it's, it's going to be a boon for the city. They say $150,000. I think it's going to be five times that. I don't think I would have voted for this show if I, if all I knew was what I heard tonight at the, at the, at the, you know, the, the stand over there. Eight months, it's going to be closed for three years, they're not going to water the plants. That's not going to happen. I love the park, just like everybody up here loves the park, and when this, when this show is going, I'm going to go over there personally, all the time, and make sure that, that the show and Glenn is doing everything that's in this, that's in this contract right here. So, I said, I wouldn't be long, and I'm just going to support the show. I'm going to see how it goes. Let's give it one year. There's a 30-day cancellation policy, you know, cancellation statement in the contract, and if it doesn't work like I think it's going to work, then I'll be the first to say, or give a motion to cancel the contract next year, but let's give them a chance and let's see how it works. And I will be supporting it.
Several speakers mentioned that they would have liked to read the contract or the EIR. It was right there online, right on with the agenda. It was out there. And I'll admit, I was not for this project from the beginning, but we worked out everything that we wanted from the city, we got, and that we negotiated. These guys are right giving Chad kudos because he worked out deals that I didn't think were possible. Yeah, and I'm for it now, and I'm going to support it because it's not, it's good for our city. And, anything else? Chad, you got anything to say?
Okay, yeah, I can jump into it. So, yeah, initially, I was probably the most pessimistic about this project, a lot like many of you, I can sympathize, you know, the idea of, you know, an event, sort of light show, laser beams, you start imagining things, you know, tarp covering over all the grass and killing it, and what's going to happen to our trees? Are they going to be destroyed? What about the environment? What about all the HB residents that are going to be displaced from all of this? And these are concerning things, but as it turns out, when you dig deep and you wrestle with the facts, such an event does not exist. And so I just want to concur that the agreement and the EIR are accessible when you go online to the Huntington Beach website. You just go to the Agenda in Minutes and you look at the council meeting for the night, and this is good information, I think, for just anyone, you know, to have. You can click on the Agenda item, and then all the attachments will pop up, and so all the information is there. You can see the draft agreement, you can see the EIR, so it's an environmental impact, you know, research for anyone that doesn't know. And the bottom line is that these things, like I said, these trees aren't going to be destroyed, the grass isn't going to be utterly destroyed, there's all these mitigation factors and everything that they'd taken into consideration, and I could see some waving of hands and wondering why. Well, and I mean this in the most endearing way, in that EIR, you'll discover that there are two, endearing here, tree-hugging, environment-loving biologists. That is their first love. Hard to say that they would sell out on the environment. And so they went boots-on-the-ground October 25th. It's Amanda French and Florence Chan, and they surveyed about 49 acres of the surrounding area, and what they wanted to take into consideration is what type of effect would this possibly have? What type of impact? Would it have on the birds, not just the birds, the, the possibility of nests? They, they scanned, they went looking for nests, all the way down to butterflies. What might this do to a butterfly when it's going through its stages of metamorphosis? What might the light do? All the way down to the insects on the grass floor, they took into consideration, what type of impact is this going to have on the grass? And if you do the digging, you wrestle with what is in this EIR, you'll discover that there are mitigation factors in place. There's no tarp that's going to cover and kill. There's geotextile path walkways that let in air, they let in light. You know, one of Steve's, Engel's major concerns was, you know, are they going to shut off the water? They're going to keep the water on. They're going to try and work around all of the sprinkler heads, so the sprinklers will be on, they will be on, the trees aren't going to die. Another concern that they brought up is, you know, the possibility of eagles. Again, they, they did the research, they look for eagles, but here's another part in the EIR, is that even though there's no eagle nest that were discovered, when they hit boots-on-the-ground October 25th, they're going to go out and they're going to look again before the event starts, a week before. And not only that, while the event is going, they come out and they look again. And so some people kind of want to do a waving of a hand and just say, at this point, I'm going to, you know, put on my tinfoil hat, put my head in the sand, and I don't believe in EIRs anymore after all. You know, I don't, I don't trust Fauci, and he said, trust the science, and he says he is science, and I get it. We're not just trying to say, trust the EIR like you should just trust Fauci. You know, what should we do? We should look into the actual evidence. And so when you look at the EIR, there are certain indicators where you would be able to tell if this group, ESA, was just trying to rubber stamp it or not. And so, they have detailed analysis when it comes to the biological resources, the noise control, the energy use, all of these things, they did not strictly need to do, but they took those steps again, and I mean this in daring because they're tree-hugging environmentalists. They love nature. They went above and beyond. They were very stringent. And so here's what came back. And if you don't want the event to happen in the park simply because you don't want the event to happen in the park, this might be displeasing to you because you might be hoping, maybe this will have an impact on the environment. They came back saying, no significant impact on the environment. Another one of the concerns was, what about all the vehicles that are going to be coming through? How many people are going to be coming at night? You know, there's estimates, you know, maybe 1,000 people per night. I think that's pretty optimistic. You know, there's a, a stadium seating for 2,000 people, maybe on like one of the best nights, I don't know. Hey, I hope that many people come out, but you do the math on that. You know, 1,000 people. How many people sit in a car? Well, people don't want to trust the EIR, so let's just go with common sense. How many people are going to go to this event in a vehicle? You've got mom and dad, it's a family-friendly event. You've got mom and dad in the car, and probably at least a kid or two. We divide that out. There's 1,000 people going to the event at night. It's broken up into three different shows. That breaks down to 333 people in how many cars? Well, if you're doing four people per car, that's 67 vehicles. Spread out over five lots to the north, south, east, and west. What kind of an impact is that going to have on the environment? Well, or on, on traffic? The EIR says, no significant impact. And these are during non-peak hours, keep in mind. So just keep those things in mind. What if we had 2,000 in a night? That would be 667 people per show, over three shows. That would break down to 133 vehicles. Again, you're breaking that down into five different lots, not a significant impact, and that's just a common sense approach to it. As far as the effect on people, then, you know, people kind of shift to, you know, what about all the Huntington Beachers? They're going to be displaced and not going to be able to enjoy the park. We are talking about 2% of our park space. 2%. 98% of the park will still be accessible, enjoyable for people to go. And then I kind of got wondering, I, I wonder how many people, because I'm, I'm kind of one of the few that actually goes to that part of the park regularly. I work out there all the time, I meet up with a group of guys, we've got the pull-up bars, and I've observed, you know, people going and coming and going the park. How many actual Huntington Beach residents go to that area of the park in the same six month period that this event would be taking place, from September into March? Well, it's amazing, there's a consulting group that we reached out to, a spacer, and they could do something called geospatial tracking, where they track cellphone data, and they can give you details. All you have to do is draw the lines over the map, put in parameters, a certain amount of time, and they can tell you precisely how many people go through that area, what their gender is, what their age is, what their level of income is, what their ethnicity is. Great detail. So, that leads me to wonder, how many people actually lay eyes on that portion of the park during the same span of time that this event will be taking place? Huntington Beach residents, it's less than 1%. It's closer to half every percent of Huntington Beach residents even lay eyes on this spot over the course of a six-month period. And so when you really wrestle with the research and you look over the agreement, and I wish folks would just read the agreement, a lot of their questions would be answered, concerns about it being eight months, it's not. It's going to be a four-month run, with setup time on the front and back end of that. You know, as far as the financial benefit for the city, I think one of the things I was happiest about, and sorry, Glenn, I'm, I'm blown away, I actually was able to get this, but this changed it all, was five nights of 100% revenue goes directly to the city. Think about that. At $35 a ticket, if they're doing 1,000 in a night, that's $175,000 directly to the city just based off of those four nights. If they're able to do the 2,000 in those five nights, that's $350,000 directly to the city just off those five nights. That doesn't include the 60% we get on parking, and that parking is going to go towards repairing the fountains, repairing the irrigation in the park. And that's not for any potential damages, there's $50,000 that the licensee, as a baseline, is providing to fix any potential minor damages that just simply would come. There's people out at the park right now, maybe not right now, but during the day, maybe there's some trotting around. There's going to be an impact to some degree because they're impacting it with their feet as we speak. And so the question is, how much of an impact is going to be there? And when you really dig into it, it's not a significant impact, and this is a huge, huge financial benefit to our city, and not just that, it's a family-friendly event. This is truly going to be something enjoyable to go to. I think it's going to be the jewel of that portion of the park, and we're going to be begging to be working with them again in the future. And so there's just a lot of benefit that's there for us here in Huntington Beach. I think it's totally worth it, and that's why I shifted from being the biggest pessimist about it to, now that I've looked at all the details and I encourage all of you to do the same, I, I think this is just a huge net positive for our city. And as you heard, we have a without-cause 30-day termination clause after the first season. So if we don't like it, you know, we can ask them to go. But I say, let's give it a chance. Let's let it get a little sunshine, you know, pour a little water on it and see how this thing grows. It could be a benefit for our city.
I'll be much briefer than that. So I reviewed a lot of the posts, the comments, talked to people, made phone calls to people who have been opposed to this project, and we heard their concerns. The main concern was parking from a lot of the residents. We decided we'll do parking districts so that the residents always have their parking spaces available. Next, it was the watering, and that's when actually our meeting with Mr. Engel comes in. He was concerned, he posted that the grass wouldn't be watered, so we met with him at the site, we walked, we discussed the issue, we, we told him, it will be watered. That's incorrect information. We did ask him to correct it, but he said people were going to be mad at him if he did. So after talking to him, explaining what happened, I said, this is a great opportunity for us to collaborate, well, with the Central, we'll work together with the Central Park Collaborative, and you guys help us oversee the project. We spoke to Glenn and said, well, Mr. Engel should be there at the installation, look at, I'm sorry, supervise the installation. If there are any issues, let us know immediately. If there's any damage to any trees, the grass, let us know immediately, let's work together. Then moving forward, I said, well, they are going to put a fence around it. Let's take advantage of that opportunity to educate the people who walk by there. Why don't we work with the Central Park Collaborative to come up with milestones, historical moments in our park, and let's just print these posters and, you know, something very tasteful, and put it on the fence? He said, well, that's a great idea. So while people walk by during the day, they'll be learning about the park. And I said, well, why don't we also attach a QR code so that people can donate to the Central Park Collaborative and then generate some revenue that way? Take it- Take advantage of every opportunity that we can take to work together. And he said, that was a great idea. And one of the last things I said to Mr. Engel, I said, please give me a call if you have any questions. We don't want to raise taxes. We don't want to have to develop HDD, we do not want to do that. And when I talked to him the first time, and I said, we're trying to avoid raising taxes, that should be a last-ditch effort. His response was, well, raise the taxes. We'd rather have you raise the taxes than do this. Said, once you raise the taxes, they're not going to go down, and that's difficult for people who are on fixed income. Our seniors are already struggling, so it's easier to say that if you're not in that position. Raising taxes should be the absolute last, last effort we do in balancing this budget. So when we walked away, he was very happy. He was going to talk to some people, apparently it didn't go well for him. So after we're, after talking that we were going to work with him, I was disheartened to see him post, without even talking to us, all these posts attacking us, asking for Attorney General Bonta, who is an enemy of Huntington Beach, is trying to destroy our whole city with high-density development, to get him to intervene in this. High-density development will absolutely destroy our city. Having a trial test run on this event for one year will not destroy our city. I could not understand that logic. We'd rather try different avenues. We saw people on social media saying, focus on our budget in other ways. Well, we're looking at efficiencies in every department, we're reviewing old leases to try to get them back up to market rate. We're looking into every single opportunity that we can to mitigate some of this budget budgeting issue. A lot of our supporters were commenting about that, and I have meetings set with several, so we can discuss what we're doing. A lot of what we're doing is at City Hall, behind closed doors, and by the way, for anybody watching here, if you want to meet, so we can explain to you some of what we're doing to get ahead of this budget deficit, please reach out. I mean, really reach out. Don't tell, don't say, yes, I'm going to reach out, and then not do it, and then start posting. It doesn't help anyone. So once again, we're trying to prevent the taxing, the HDD. I think this is a great opportunity for us to move forward and try some public-private partnerships. If this works, great. If it doesn't, we will not have them back. We're being asked to not try anything. We're saying, don't touch the park, don't touch the library, don't touch downtown, we don't want short-term rentals, we don't want taxes, we don't want HDD. We have to try something. The worst thing we can do right now is to do nothing. That should not be an option. So I'm hoping that people who have questions, reach out to us. Let's work together on this. The budget deficit is going to affect every single one of us. If we don't even have money to maintain our parks, that will be a worst-case scenario than trying this event for one year. So that's pretty much all I have to say. I do believe the worst thing we can do is just sit here and worry that people are going to get upset if we tried these different opportunities, so I will actually be supporting this project.
I'll make the motion. Tony?
Tony, Tony made the first.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'll second.
Councilmember Twain?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Strickland?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?